Good afternoon, everyone. We are in the community home meeting of Tuesday, July 25th. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. We have an agenda in front of the council. We're with me, Mr. Motion about the Agenda, moved by Councilor Rais, moved by Councilor Elliott. All those in favor, opposed, defending, motion carries. First up, we have Adaptive Recreation Access Program update. Tim and Galen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. My name is Tim Osman, the Director of Recreation Services, and I'm here today to present, along with our advisory team, on proposed Adaptive Recreation Access Program. I'd like to introduce Chelsea Walker from Whistler Adaptive Sports, and Cory, who's a parent and an advocate, and Christine Creer, one of our fabulous program coordinators, who has supported this project. So, just a bit of a background. Recreation Services currently provides some adaptive program. We provide financial access, support, and fee admission for sport persons. There has been a service gap that has been expressed, that there is a barrier for children with special needs to participate in an inclusive way into recreation programs, especially as a child participating in a regular group program and being part with his peers or her peers. So we created a community-based project team to help us determine the challenges and come up with some solutions. So not everyone is here today, but a broad-based group with some social support, non-profits, and a lot of parent advocates. Our project goal was to, and is to, establish an Adaptive Recreation Access Program, and we set forward a very simple process to engage community and stakeholders, determine what the need is, determine solutions, and then to choose a partner or a service provider if required. So what did we learn? We learned that 30 to 40 children in Squamish are in need of support. We learned, oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna turn this over to you here. Don't, don't, I'm jumping this slide. That's first, please go ahead.
Okay. We've identified that there's about 30 to 40 children who could use the service in town. And something that's been, I've also identified as a key, or, yeah, identified as to keep the program low cost, to make it accessible to as many families as possible. A lot of families with kids with diverse needs have a lot on their plate, and keeping the cost low is really important. To ensure participants are fully included in the existing programs at Brendan Park, for example, if you want to put your child in a camp, if you have a child with diverse needs who wants to attend, that they be able to attend and be included with other neurotypical kids. A Leisure Buddy Program is what we've come up with. Other communities use Leisure Buddy model. This is what we're looking to implement as well. And that's where the child attends a program, say, at Brendan Park, and is accompanied by a buddy to give them a little bit of extra support. The demographic currently in need of recreation support is children that we've identified. The program will build each year as the volunteer capacity increases. But we aim to start with the children demographic and build from there. We want to leverage nonprofits and volunteerism. There's an opportunity to leverage volunteers in the community and use the expertise of non-profits who operate within the Cedar Sky Corridor, being WASP. Whistler Adaptive Sports does this, and that's where they kind of come in. We've looked at having small fees for programming. What we've come up with is $4 an hour, or 25% of camp fee, so when your child is enrolled in a camp, and then you pay $4 an hour and 25% of the camp fee to have a volunteer accompany your child for that duration. Using lifeguards to deliver swim programs. And at this point, starting with 3- to 12-year-olds is kind of a starting point for now. A little bit of background about Whistler Adaptive. It's a nonprofit society. It's had over 17 years of service in the Cedar Sky Corridor. Core staff of 180 volunteers. 18 sports offered to individuals with physical cognitive or physical disabilities. I like to call it diverse needs. It's my term that I like for my daughter. There's already a Buddy Program in place, and we've definitely identified that there's a need for this kind of programming in Squamish, to allow kids with diverse needs to participate in programs that they otherwise cannot.
So, as council has received, District has received a proposal from Whistler Adaptive to provide a Leisure Buddy Program. And as mentioned before, to start with, target 3- to 12-year-olds. It would provide a maximum of 80 hours' support for camps and 40 hours of recreation programs per child. And I think, especially in the first year, that will easily be the need. Fee to participant is 25% of recreation program cost and $4 an hour for recreation programs. The 25% is to keep the costs low, because, of course, it can be an eight or a nine-hour camp, and 25% is a lower fee cost. Whistler Adaptive is proposing 1,230 hours of Leisure Buddy hours per year, and including eight hours, or above that, eight hours of training for our district staff to be comfortable, understand, and to work with children with diverse needs. So I'll throw it over to Chelsea to discuss and introduce Whistler Adaptive and to talk about the roles.
Yeah, so our roles and responsibilities within this program are to use some of our existing tools that we have, not just in Whistler at Pemberton and sometimes in Squamish. So we really want to create an efficient model where we're not just looking at the Leisure Buddy Program, but we're looking at each individual who we touch holistically as to how they touch sport and recreation in our corridor. So, for example, a really good example would be Grace Corey. So Grace would be a prime candidate for this program. We would do a yearly assessment of her. We would sit down and draw up an individualized sport plan, which would take into account what, and the parent would like Grace to do within the Brendan Park programming. But then, at the same time, we would talk to them about Nordic, about skiing, about kids camp in the summer. Grace has been actively coming up every Friday for a full-day camp in Whistler and doing a multitude of different sports. So we really feel that there's a lot of efficiencies and a lot of leveraging through this particular program across everything that Whistler Adaptive does. As I mentioned, we do have training modules already in place that we would roll out, and also use our access to different national sports organizations and new training models that are coming down the pipe. We have 20 to 30 volunteers already living in the Squamish area, so we would look to lever those and to have them deliver programming within the Squamish footprint. And then, we would continue to track the number of athletes accessing the program, not just on an annual basis, but also we track on a long-term basis, how they connect to sport, and then provide a yearly review of the program back to the District of Squamish. We do see this as a starting point for us in Squamish, that we can continue to grow so that a lot of similar opportunities that occur in Whistler could be eventually moved into the Squamish footprint as well. We also have a grant, and we are a registered charity, not just an off-for-profit society, that would bring a secondary program to Squamish. So again, the one-time intake would help with that. And then, as we continue to look at Squamish, we have other funding opportunities that we can look at as a charity to continue to fundraise in this community to make sure that all participants who need adaptive recreation have access to it. I have a few slides of what we do. So, as you can see, when I say we run 18 different sports, that's 18 different sports, a slew of different models. So it's right from one-on-one, where somebody comes to us and says, "I'm just learning, needing to learn the sport. I need a lot of support," through to a full integrative model. And we're actually doing a reverse integrated model through our kids camp in Whistler right now, where we're bringing siblings into the camp who are neurotypical into an adaptive setting that's working really well. So we hike, we do everything we do here in Squamish. I mean, there's a lot of opportunity to lever upon. And again, this is, for us, we work age three and up. Right now, we concentrate on 3- to 12, but again, looking to the future, there's opportunity for every participant in the community.
So in addition to Whistler Adaptive proposal, there would also be a swim program delivered by our lifeguards. And they would deliver one-on-one support as required for swim lessons. This, of course, is due to safety concerns, that they need to have the support of a trained expert for safety reasons. Similar, there'd be lots of opportunity for children to take part. Essentially, a child could partake in lessons all year round. That's the four swim lessons sets, or they can do private lessons if their assessment, of course, shows that that's the initial requirement. And the goal would be, of course, if somebody started at one-on-ones, they would eventually be in an inclusive program, and then maybe even eventually just be in a program. The fee to participant is 25% of program fee. District of Squamish investment, this has been approved in the 2017 financial plan. What we are proposing is to enter into a service agreement with Whistler Adaptive for the amount of $15,000. There would be labor involved, staff training and support, that's developing our staff, for a total of expense of roughly $20,000. There's a small amount of revenue expected, so there would be a net expense of approximately For swim lessons, lifeguard labor is approximately $25,000, with some revenue of approximately $2,500 for a net expense of $22,000. And this has been approved in the 2017 SRLD budget. A very good fit with council's priorities around developing, encouraging, helping community diversity, acquiring accessibility, promoting physical health, and ensuring equality. Recommended motions are up on the floor, and we, of course, are here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I think all of council is quite excited to see this program in front of us. And I do want, again, thank the parents who brought it to our attention that our programs weren't accessible and weren't meeting the needs of all of our kids in the community. So thanks again for that initiative. Really excited to, see a hand coming up, really excited that you're here in front of us and that we actually started implementing these programs on a full-scale level. Councilor Chappell?
Yeah, I completely appreciate as well the collaboration with the Cedar Sky region on programs that we probably couldn't do on our own, and that you guys, you brought your experience and made it so viable for us to actually implement these programs. I have a question for staff on why bothers you with the $4 an hour for a service charge for a month, for an extra? As far as, it's a very low amount of children. It's not like we're serving the entire public.
So just to put a fine point in it, what would be the additional, you're to up the budget to not require that? It just seems like a bit of a $2,500, essentially.
Thank you, and through the mayor. It is a relatively small amount, and we are budgeted safely, not to have a revenue. It was discussed as a project team, and the discussion essentially revolved around that it would be best to make the money go as far as possible, being one, small amount. And B, that it adds value, that if somebody signed up for a private one-on-one lesson, so to speak, they have a little bit of skin in the game to make sure that they show up, there's some value, there's some value there for coming to camps, that sort of thing. Relatively small amount, but that was the discussion recommendation.
And $2,500 amount of revenue, is that based on every child signing up for the program? Or is that, or is that limited?
We built the budget based on approximately 50% of the children participating 50% of the time. And I believe, and that's why we'll audit year after year, I think we are well-budgeted for the initial year and, of course, 2018. And as the program builds, we might have to work with that.
And if it becomes cost prohibitive, there are other systems you can help to offset those funds if there are families that are challenged by the fee. Make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I just think that it's, if you're looking at a control method to ensure that people show up, I don't think $4 is either an incentive or prohibitive. And I really think that that amount of budget really is, you're looking at taking that little bit of extra money, which, again, sets them aside from being, all we're doing is providing the service.
So let's ask questions, and then we can debate the finer points of the proposal. And put a motion forward. Any other questions for the group? Councilor Chappell?
I think I got this right from the report, but the $22,000 figure you show there was within our 2017 budget.
And so there's no additional budget request, although it is looking for a two-year contract, so there would be a budget committed to the next year? Just to be clear, I mean, I don't think there's any question.
For clarity, we're looking for, Whistler Adaptive is looking for a one-year, one-year agreement. And that is, with open words in Chelsea's mouth, so they can reassess as well, that it's a good fit within their organization.
Okay. So I'm just clarifying, the motion says, in the amount of $15,000 plus tax, I do it for a two-year term. Do you want the question? Am I?
My apologies, the motion and the report, the one in front of me is for a one-year term.
So it should say one-year term?
Correct.
And then we'll reassess to see if it's a fair price and come back. Great. Anybody else? So why don't we put the motion as written on the report? If Councilor Chappell wants to add an amendment to it, we can do it afterwards. Moved by Councilor Race, seconded by Councilor Pryor.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward. I am not opposed to a small amount of revenue, the $4 an hour charge. And I can see where you sort of wonder why we bother doing that. And, I mean, it's like, you know, throw a party with three people, spill more. It's just, there is a little bit of value to it.
I want to go to your party.
That was in the old days. So I do follow that. And I think when we're talking about a one-year program or a one-year commitment, I'm prepared to go with the recreation committee on that point, and we can, once again, reassess it in a year and see if that is high or low or necessary at all.
Councilor Kent, Councilor Chappell, Councilor?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you. I have friends whose children fall into the category of the needs for this program, and it's been a long time coming. I'm glad to see the speed and dexterity with which you guys put it together. Thank you for that, and, yeah, welcome. And I appreciate the fact that we can look at it in a year and benchmark it, see where it is and how successful it has been. Thanks.
Thank you. For years, I've been listening to Councilor Race say, "Well, I'm a lawyer, but I'm not acting as lawyers." I, with an MBA, I recognize that the amount of administration to actually collect these fees is going to be far greater than, it's going to be far greater than the $4 and $2,500 that this takes in. So I'd like to move that, we actually remove the fee from the service for the families in order to benchmark where this goes. If there is a problem, we can look at that later, but to expect problems before they happen...
Yeah, that's a really long motion.
It's not.
You can articulate your rationale if the motion wants to...
I, like, I'd remove the...
So it's been amended? Now, there were two programs, each, the income was $2,500 for each of the...
Yep.
So you're talking about $5,000?
Yes.
Moved by Councilor Chappell that we waive the $4 fee, the equivalent amount in the budget, $5,000 on the Adaptive Recreation Access Program. Seconded by Councilor Blackmore. You can speak to your amendment.
Thank you. I think I've already spoken to it, but, yeah, I basically, I don't agree with administering fees that are not actually covering the intake and the staff time to administer the fees. I'd like to see where this program goes for a year at a free cost. If there's a problem with people showing up to their classes and booking the thing, then I would like to see a better incentive put forward for people showing up. But I think slapping $4 on is like a meaningless task that costs us more in the long run.
Okay, on the amendment, and then I'll go back to Councilor Elliott, once you've decided on the amendment. Councilor Elliott?
So if we waive these fees, that money is still in the budget this year?
Correct.
Well, are you sure?
Yes.
We have enough to, sort of, $5,000 within our budget?
The budget was built without revenue considerations.
Excellent, thank you.
I just wanted to add, as a parent of a child with diverse needs, I have a daughter who's four, who has Trisomy 21, Down Syndrome, and she's accessing a lot. And we also started a group here in town for parents with kids with diverse needs. And what we're finding is that there's so many things going on for these families, so one thing to take into consideration with a program like this with attendance, is that a lot of these kids have medical issues and life-threatening often. And my daughter has had open-heart surgery and things like that, so it's just things to consider when dealing with this population, is that when the attendance isn't right away or it's, you know, up and down, those are things to consider, because that's very real for us. And there's so many appointments and therapies that, you know, not to say that, like, this is needed, and Grace really participates and has really benefited from WASP. She does from A to Z and everything in between, and she's four. So it's pretty cool. So I just wanted to bring that up, just as something that, now that I'm in it, you know, I've worked with children with diverse needs, but now that I'm a parent and on that side, it really becomes apparent that my child's very healthy, you know? She needs open-heart surgeries in the future, and those are things that can really impact a program with attendance at times, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Councilor Elliott?
Just another question. So given that everyone's going to assess in one year, what are we measuring? What are we going to measure?
Well, let's talk to the amendment. Is this relative amendment, even? Or is it relative to the... Sure, go ahead.
No, it can be relative to the motion.
Motion. Sure, why don't you do that? Yeah. And I appreciate what you said, and from my point of view, success of this is not 40 kids show up or one kid shows up. One kid shows up, it's successful. It's helpful. So I'm not sure we all want to evaluate this on attendance, anyway. I'm happy at this point not to charge the fee. I think we, let's go into this program, make it really accessible, get people going, and then evaluate in a year to see if that type of charge is something that... And I suspect a lot of families with diverse needs, children, go in a lot of these programs, so it can add up. So I'm okay at this point to waive the, on the amendment, waive the fee. Councilor Blackmore?
I'm sure everybody around the table was shocked to hear me say this, but I am in favor of eliminating youth recreation fees in general, so certainly in this particular instance, I would be supporting the amendment. And I feel that youth recreation is something that actually, not only does it lead to better outcomes in terms of health for participants, as well as helping support low-income families that, in the end, it actually saves us money, to have a more active and accessible recreation environment.
Okay, I'll hold the question on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Councilor Race opposes, motion carries. So on the motion as amended, Councilor Elliott, did you want to speak further?
Yeah, I just, I imagine that Whistler Adaptive has a way to measure the impact of that program, so I'm just curious, because I don't think it can, this will be a good one, but we do want to make sure that utilization is as high as it can be. We want to encourage people to participate.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And like staff here, I have a board of directors to report to as well, to ensure that we're using our resources adequately and for the best return on investment. We look at how impact is measured, okay? So if we're in a one-on-one setting, we're looking at how somebody comes to us and where they're at in a year in terms of their progress within the sport or within their own physical health and wellness. When it comes to group settings, we look at ratios and ensuring that we have a good participant-to-volunteer ratio, because, again, a lot of resources goes into this, especially on a charitable front. So for every dollar that we bring in through other fee-for-service or through any program fee, even a $4 fee, we go and raise another $3 to make that program happen, at least. So for us, we just want to make sure that the dollars are being spent accurately, with the best intention, and that our volunteer resources are being adequately used and not being... Volunteers are a really, really important resource, right? We can't waste them. We need to make sure that they're being well-used and they're being appreciated and that they're having impact as well as having the impact from the child progressing through their sport.
So does that mean Whistler Adaptive will still take the $4? Because I just heard them say that they would leverage our $4 fee to make three more. So I understood we made the fee, but I also heard Whistler Adaptive say they would use that money to leverage to create...
How the model would be set up is through a service fee. So we would be paying them regardless of any fee, $50,000. If we put in place a fee for the participant, a charge, that is us recompensating some of that cost.
If I may, so when I say that, so if we run a swim program internally with Whistler Adaptive, because a lot of our kids can't, at this point, integrate into a municipal program, so they need to be brought up to speed in order to actually go into a pure, appropriate swim program. So we would charge exactly what a typical child would pay in a group lesson, $5.50 per lesson, like $55 for 10 lessons. That doesn't, that's not what it costs us in very highly specialized environments. Those were the fees I was talking about. We do charge the participant, because we do feel there is value in sport and that participants, not huge fees, but there should be something that is paid. Now, they will be paying in order to access municipal programs, so they are already paying, they're just not paying a value-add piece at this point.
Sorry, just to add to, so this was identified, I identified this as, so for example, last year, I would have had to pay for Grace to go into a camp, plus finding someone to support her. She just needs a bit of extra support. So, yeah, so that's basically, we're still paying, like anyone else who's signing up their child who's neurotypical. So by paying that fee, we do have, like you said, like a piece of skin in the game or whatever, we have that commitment to, because when I pay for something, obviously I want to go, we pay like everybody else, it's just that we're not having to pay an additional fee to have our child, like, if you have a child with diverse needs, you shouldn't have to pay more than someone who has a neurotypical child, kind of thing.
And so, right now, all things are equal in terms of payment, there's no additional fee at all, with the current motions on the floor. Okay. Are we ready to call a question? Councilor Chappell, you okay? I saw your hand go up.
No.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, defending, motion carries unanimously. Thanks, great work. And part of that motion was that we bring it back to the council meeting tonight to make sure it's ratified and we can giddy up. So I'm just hoping that staff can make sure that that gets on tonight's agenda. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Moving on, we are Squamish, why don't we take a two-minute break and allow people to... We are in our community hall for July 25th, and we are item 3-2, Squamish 2040 OCP Phase Three Engagement Summary and Growth Management. Sarah and Matt, thank you for seeing both here.
Thank you, Mary and Council. My name is Sarah McJanet. I'm a community planner with the district. Hello to the community that's joining us in person today and online. We are very pleased today to present a summary of the Phase Three engagement that we've done through the OCP update process. And our second purpose today is to present further considerations and receive direction on a growth management approach concerning long-term phasing of development for incorporation into a final draft plan that is under preparation and refinement through Phase Four of our process. If possible, we'd love to run through the slides that have been prepared for council today and host questions and discussion at the end. But of course, if council needs immediate clarification as we go, please let us know. Happy to support that. So this timeline indicates and highlights where we've been and where we are in the overall OCP update process. We're in the final stages of Phase Three, and we're completing and presenting a review of the consultation on the discussion draft that was released in May during Phase Three. So looking ahead to Phase Four, we will be using the inputs and the directions that we received in Phases One through Three to refine the plan as we prepare to bring it back to the community, including our community advisory committee and council, and then as we move into a more formal approvals process later this year. And we'll detail some next steps for Phase Four in a bit. But in terms of Phase Three, our efforts in the last many months continue to build momentum around the ongoing OCP planning process, and we did significant promotional and outreach activities that helped us connect with the community. So some of our tactics, including producing homegrown OCP video, this was an independent, very low-cost... this was an independent, very low budget, by the seat of our pants film about the OCP. We incorporated community voices to make clear how and why the OCP matters and encouraging the community to stay with us through the policy review. We did continuous updates to our project website. We used the dedicated OCP mailing list to promote the release of the discussion draft and the executive summary. And again, thanks to our community advisory committee for that suggestion. We ran consecutive ads in the chief newspaper as well as the large 12-page colored insert with the executive summary. And that was really a primary tool that we used to summarize succinctly the key elements in the plan. And then in addition to that, we used all of our regular communication channels to promote the OCP. So our e-news, social media, we did, we ran radio ads, online ads, and we did posters and placards throughout the community. And then we also put in a wide-reaching mobile engagement effort in this phase. So in the end, we ended up doing eighteen neighborhood pop-up events over a four-to-five week period, just on, leading into May 11th release of the discussion draft and the opening of the online survey through to mid-June and as well as youth engagement sessions. So we spanned north to south. We hit the farmer's market, the gondola, the Squamish 55 Activity Center, neighborhood parks, shopping centers, the women's center, Brennan Park. We were at Trailheads and we hosted two youth sessions at the Don Ross Middle, one at the Don Ross Middle School and also one at the Squamish Youth Center. I'd like to publicly shout out to Alex Anderson, the youth outreach staff at the Cedar Sky Community Services, as well as the counselors and leadership staff at Don Ross Middle School for their help in making connections with youth. The pop-ups were a really effective way for us to connect face-to-face with the community. We drove participation in the planned events and the survey. And we heard a lot of appreciation from the community. They really like meeting up with people out and about and encouraged us to do more engagement in that pop-up format. So in terms of the distribution of the 12-page executive summary, as I mentioned, that was done via the chief. We, congratulations to the chief, thank you Christina. We confirmed there are forty-two hundred and eighty-two subscribers to the chief newspaper. So they would have received that insert and then we did an overrun. So we produced more of those executive summaries. And those were deposited at public municipal facilities. So the mini hall, library, the Squamish 55 Activity Center and Brennan Park. And then for the discussion draft, that was launched online as well as the survey, which was open for four weeks. We received 515 responses total to the survey, 452 of which were online and 63 paper. In addition to that, we received letter and email submissions as well as additional survey forms specific to District Lots 509, 510, as well as additional correspondence to council. And so some of that correspondence went directly to mayor and council through legislative services. So on the blue papers that we provided, we submitted to you to make sure that you could see some of those additional letters that, or emails that were received, addressed to mayor and council outside of the survey and as well as the petition. So in terms of who participated with us in Phase 3, there was a diverse range of people. Based on those who shared their age, on the top bar chart, you can see that there's a younger demographic that participated. It's actually a younger demographic than previous phases. However, we did see fewer youth under nineteen as well as seniors over the age of sixty-five, but a higher proportion of people aged twenty to thirty-four. So on the top chart, you can see the Phase 3 participation. And then in the bottom, I just showed the Phases 1 and 2 participation age profiles. So for example, for the under nineteen, you can see in Phase 1, we had a larger percentage of under nineteen participating with us and then kind of slowly dropping. I would say this is not necessarily uncommon though as we get into the deeper policy crunching and review with the community. In terms of gender split, or the participants, there was a gender split there. And similar to our population as well as we asked about home tenure. So we had 25% renters, 75%, I'm sorry. That color is, yeah, 25% renters, 75% owners. And as well, 74% of participants on the forums highlighted that they were affiliated in some form with a group in Squamish. You can see the categories below. The highest percentage was around sports and recreation and health and wellness, arts, culture, heritage, so on and so forth. We also received specific letters from different organizations within the community that we summarized in the Phase 3 Engagement Report. I wanted to outline a missing letter from the Squamish Seek Society that's in the package that you have there that was provided to the district, but we missed reporting on their, just summarizing their submittal in there. Before highlighting the results briefly...
Can you just go back to that slide?
Yep.
I just kind of understand your first draft. So 53%, that's just 53% of participants and then 25 of 35, 49. And our population is 27% in that, so it's
Exactly.
overrepresented based on the...
Exactly.
Trying to understand that.
Sorry, thanks for clarifying that. Yeah, so Modus helped us see, you know, just to show and compare the participation by age compared to the profile of our age, of our actual community through the census.
I'll keep on this one?
Yeah.
Well, it's actually on the previous side. Phase 1 and 2, we use different age patient profiles. Does that shift when we use the same twenties, thirties, forties versus blending decades?
Yeah, and certainly we can break that out. What ended up happening is that through the most recent census, they did adjust some of their population groupings, or the, sorry, I'm sorry, the age groupings. So it wasn't, we weren't comparing apples to apples, but we could further break that out if possible. But our survey was based on the census, the most recent census in Phase 3.
And how they break it out.
Exactly, yeah.
Sorry, I was just going to ask this, but the scale of 300 and the other, between the scale between Phase 1 and Phase 2, 300 versus 60?
Yeah.
Five tracks look the same with the scales?
Yeah, that's based on the number of people that responded in the survey. So in, that's on the left-hand side, that's just showing that we had, like, based on the number of responses. I'd have to go back to those summaries to tell you exactly how many.
That is needed.
Yeah, exactly. Let me just fast forward here. So before highlighting a brief summary of the results and getting into the growth management topic, I wanted to pause and actually send a big thank you to the community for their participation. When you read the range and extent of the detailed commentary, the verbatim comments in the appendix, both positive and negative around the process and around the discussion draft, we were really blown away. And I think that this level of continued engagement, even as we are in, deep in the heavy policy review phase, is really tremendous. And it is very clear that Squamish, we knew this already, but Squamish is, really cares deeply about past, present, and future. And so we just wanted to really thank the community for sticking with us and continuing on this path. So in terms of the vision and goals comments, you will see in the Phase 3 summary that there was definitely general support with respect to the proposed vision and goals. There weren't very many completely unsupportive comments of the vision and goals. There are a lot of questions about implementation. So, you know, there are these aspirational vision, aspirational goals. You know, how do we actually achieve those things? And how are we, how will they be implemented? What are actually the tactics and actions? There were many reiterated comments that we heard that were reiterated from early phases of the process around specific local issues. So affordable housing, local jobs, transportation, environmental protection. Again, the community is really providing strong commentary and urgency around many of these items. One of my favorite comments that I wanted to highlight from the vision and goals commentary, one submittal said, "You have a good vision. We have had plenty of chances to input. You need a fierce editor." And so we hear you. We hear you. So that we've got lots of work still, but anyway, just wanted to share that. Fierce editing. In terms of the general comments, many of the, again, general support for the discussion draft, we heard an appreciation for the engagement process, also some continued criticism, concerns again around implementation. So how are we going to fund these different initiatives and tactics? Comments around consistency. People like, you know, for example, comments around being supportive of the directions with policy objectives and directions, but saying, you know, how, there's concern about how we will consistently apply those values and priorities and objectives over time. There were again, many comments around specific local issues, comments around the pace of growth, the rapid sense of that growth was progressing, need to limit sprawl. And also sprinkled throughout the verbatim comments, you will see many area or project-specific comments, specifically around specific parcels of land. For example, District Lots 509, 510, there are comments about the Garibaldi Springs land development applications, still comments about things like L and G. So you will see, people take the opportunity, and this is not uncommon, people take the opportunity to comment kind of beyond the discussion draft per se, but you know, really to focus in on specific land development applications or projects that are before the district. I wanted to provide a little bit of information about what we heard in the youth sessions. Again, we ran those two youth sessions with the middle school and kids at the youth center. So what we did was we worked with Cedar Sky Community Services outreach staff to find the best way to solicit comments. We knew people weren't, kids weren't going to be looking at, obviously, at a big discussion draft. So we made posters and focused in on the five proposed community goals and asked what they thought about those, talked in more detail about it and asked what those things meant for them, if anything. The comments that we received focused on staying connected and adaptable to youth. So not just considering amenities and facilities and spaces for young kids, but especially for youth, safe activities, youth-friendly spaces, affordable housing and jobs and living wages and opportunities for mentoring came up. Also concerns around change and pace of growth. Some commentary around amenities and recreation for protection, assets for protection. Supporting vulnerable people in the community, providing and paying attention to the needs of, or special needs in the community as well as mental health. Transportation continues to be a topic for youth as well as more youth engagement opportunities. It's a good thing we are starting a youth engagement. So in terms of next steps before Matt gets into some of the growth management results, we just wanted to highlight for council and the community that over the next several months, we are going to be focusing on draft plan edits. We already are. And producing finalized mapping. Key part of these edits will include getting direction and continuing to work on the growth management. We're also on the side, working behind the scenes around the development permit areas, the form and character development permit areas. As you recall, in the discussion draft that was submitted, we included development permit area 1 and 2 for environmental protection as well as flood protection. But all the form and character development permitting guidelines were not included in that discussion draft. So we're continuing to work on those to bring forward. And there will be additional engagement that's needed. Also, we're going to be working on the implementation framework and setting up some initial performance measures and monitoring. So we've had discussion with our community advisory committee. There are some members of the community that are very interested in working with us and helping to inform and provide suggestions for that. So that will come back to this table. We are working to, through the engagement, continued engagement with Squamish Nation. And we've put in a request to do a staff presentation, provide an update on where we are in the process. As I mentioned, we will be coming back to the community advisory committee and the future council meetings to review a final draft plan before we move anything forward formally. Matt and I have been doing continued agency meetings, sort of pre-meetings prior to formal agency referrals of the OCP. And then also another piece that we will need to be turning our attention to as we move further into the final draft plan is developing a regional context statement. This is a legislative requirement for the OCP. As you know, the regional growth strategy is also seeing concurrent review. But once we have our final draft plan, at that point, we will then review it in alignment with the, where the regional growth strategy is at. And we'll need to present and develop, develop and present a regional context statement based on our new and approved official community plan.
So let's focus in on the public engagement piece then. We're going to the community, sorry, the growth management society thing, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments or thoughts on the community engagement piece? Counselor Schpel?
Thank you. I have been, past been hypocritical of the community engagement because I think it started late and was weeks from the beginning. We had one meeting, we waited another year and then had another meeting. But the pop-ups were absolutely fabulous. I know a lot of people that went. I do look at this and I don't blame anybody for this. I just wonder why we're making decisions based on 300 plus, 360 people in our community who are very much focused in their subgroups and the general population does not seem to be engaged in, as far as engagement. I'm not sure why that is. But, you know, two large, two large events and then some pop-ups does not see, does not, because of the outcome, just looking at the outcome, didn't seem to be enough. It's what we have and I don't expect you to go back and do any engagement. That's expensive, but I really, and I appreciate staffs. You know, I just like, I think it is a conundrum overall is how do you get the community out and engaged? You guys did a fantastic job of giving it your all and giving it a go for what that was, but I'm left making decisions off 26 people's opinions. So, and letters that are very much group-focused and group advocacy. And the wider population, very issue-based, you know? It's not general growth-based. So I look at the whole document and have great difficulty in making decisions on policy implementations without my own opinion. You know, you want to take the community's opinion, but when there's only one or two people expressing deep concern and it ends up reflecting in policy. I just wonder how that goes.
Do you want to speak to that?
I can still. Yeah. Mary, through you. I think when we look on the whole at the engagement over all three phases to date, absolutely, you definitely see focus around specific issues and sort of advocacy on the part of organizations based on values and issues that they see as the primary ones that we should be focusing on. But I think if you step back though and look on the whole at the engagement of the community, you know, we had, we've had packed events, we've had surveys in every phase. I think that the engagement has been very strong. And I think we've been really pleased with the level of engagement. So I will, you know, I think that there, when you look in detail at the type of engagement, the people are taking the time to write, you know, small novellas, you know, to us. I mean, I think there's a mix of comments out there, but I think overall, on the whole, we've been pleased with the level of engagement.
Yeah, and one thing I'd like to say with you, Mary.
Please do.
I can understand, I can emphasize with your, with your sentiment of desiring more engagement as the process goes on to continue, to feel like you know where the community's at, but I would say that although I'm surprised people don't want to spend their time reading the OCP, I think this isn't an uncommon kind of trajectory for these processes, and certainly OCPs I've worked in the past tend to, unless there are contentious issues that drive groups to engage later in the process, it's not uncommon to have this kind of deal up. And, you know, there's only so much bureaucratic writing that people want to read and engage with, and I think that it's not surprising to me that this occurs, but I would say one thing, we have, we do seem to see consistency amongst the different phases of engagement, and a lot of what we heard in this engagement stage reflected things that was said earlier on. So, you know, I think the fact that there, that there is that consistency gives me more confidence.
Can I just follow up with one question?
Sure, I've got a whole bunch of people want to speak to this, so.
Was that, did you measure whether it was the same people showing up twice in the same engagement because they're highly engaged? And, or did, because I suspect that even, it's not additional, it's the same people showing up at the same engagement, and I totally appreciate your comments and agree with your comments, but for me, it was the late start of the public engagement and only having those two, two big events weaken the ability for community engagement. But the surveys and everything, it's just, it's hard to make sense of the engagement, and it's true, you're passionate about something, so you come out and engage, but is it comparable to other communities?
You know, from our, from the consultants, oh, sorry. From our consultants, Free Mayor, they expressed, they seem to be happy with the level of engagement. They thought that the level of engagement we had at Phase Two was actually really quite good for what it was, and the fact that we're getting deeper into the policy and we're still having 500 people completing the survey and 300 people showing up, they thought, wow, that's pretty good for a town of Squamish's size.
Excellent, thank you.
So I think so far.
I think that's something to put in the context is, if the city of Vancouver got the same percentages of engagement, they keep talking like 30,000 people doing an online survey, which they never get. So I think it's, I agree, it's hard because, you know, you want to get as much input as possible, and I think that's why the outreach was really positive, going to the non, people who don't generally get engaged and just go through doing the outreach, that was great. But you have to put in the context of the size of our community, the participation level within the people, and I hate to say it, but democracy is decided by people who show up, so thank goodness we've got people showing up. And we actually get, I, you know, my conversations with Motus, especially Phase One, we had outstanding participation in the events. I think the pizza nights were a little bit disappointing. I think people didn't know how to, I think it was a bit of a, bit of an experiment. People didn't know how to engage in that, people put in social piece and getting ideas together, but we'll work on that. But I think you have to put in context of other communities, this is by far more engagement than we had in the previous OCP process, by far. And so you have to put in context, is it, is it what we'd like it to be? Of course it's not. Public engagement is never what we would like it to be. But in context, I think it was a robust strategy. It had multiple avenues that it targeted, and fundamentally, any kind of public engagement process is only one piece of what informs decision-making. There's best practices in other communities, there's obviously personal experiences from council members and staff, so there's all sorts of other inputs. Public engagement is, is one potentially very influential piece of how we decide public policy, but it's, it's not everything. This is not, this was not a participatory budgeting process. You get to go and vote and majority wins. It was very much a teasing out ideas, trying to fine-tune where people are thinking, and then you put it into a hopper, and it becomes part of the decision. I'll go to Linda then, Karen, Linda.
Thank you, Mayor Heitzman. On the heels of what you've said, certainly anecdotally, my colleagues who write the comments are commonly asking me what it is we're doing for OCP engagement, because the word is out, what we're doing is rather extraordinary might be a bit hyperbole, but certainly above beyond what normally communities do see. What I've heard from staff as well, and I love the story, is that with the pop-ups, you know, the surprise engagement that you get, the [inaudible]. Back, Mr. Melanescis told me that when they did the pop-up with the library, they actually ended up engaging with some of our homeless population who came by, and so we're engaging with homeless population in the OCP process, it's quite important. Interesting. And then there are some facts that are even said that are incorrect, so there was the first event, but it wasn't a year until the next one, and if you're okay, you want to skip ahead?
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead, you.
Yeah, I just want to confirm that it wasn't a full year. It was quite a while because we had to go away and do the drafting process, so that naturally took, you know, that was a giant piece of work that Matt and Sarah had to do before we could bring it out for the second big event.
Yeah, fair enough.
And there was consultation with First Nations in there too. Wendy, you, I, Karen?
Sorry that I missed being with the community advisory committee yesterday. My one question was, my brain is a minute, but just wanted to make sure that they felt confident in what this summary pulled up from engagement for you. I'm sorry, if they had any comments to speak to our engagement or support.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. That, the meeting that we had last night with the community advisory committee, we spent some time speaking on the engagement summary, but we probably spent more time speaking around the growth management piece, and there was high level of interest in that, and I, my feeling was that the committee was fairly supportive of the direction that the OCP was moving in. We had seven members of the CAC present, which was, you know, certainly a smaller percentage than would be ideal, but by the end of the meeting, I felt like while there was, you know, some, some concerns raised in different aspects, I think there was a general feeling that things were on the right track.
I have to say, having ended myself the engagements in the community, and participating in surveys and talking to people in the community, that while people have critiqued the policy direction, no one has commented on the engagement. That is very shallow. People have appreciated all the opportunity. And, and I have to say, the only critique I've heard is at this table by [inaudible]. And, you know, I think that is testament both to the hard work of our community advisory committee, most people have dedicated hours of their time to review our documents and make sure that what was heard was being reflected in the darkness. They're to be commended because not everyone can dive that deep in policy. But I think too, you know, at this point, when we're hearing so much positive feedback about the level of engagement, that at this late date, to the ongoing criticism, I actually don't think is fair, and doesn't serve moving this [inaudible] in a positive way. I'm not sure what it adds to the debate at this point. Staff continue to engage, staff are continuing to listen, and every opportunity, council's had an opportunity to influence and [inaudible]. And so to say that we haven't done enough engagement, I mean, council's job is to look at everything we see in the community from a high level, not base our decision on any major interest group, where it's our job to hold the high level and make a decision on the OCP with that in mind. So I'm really proud of the [inaudible] and I thank our staff for having the initiative to go out there and be trailheads and on the bus and [inaudible].
Counselor Reese.
Thank you. Similar comments because I've heard from a number of people in the community about the engagement all very favorably in words like set a new standard for engagement and over and above and so forth. And so personally, I'm quite satisfied with engagement, and I take the point that, you know, three or 400 people in a population of 20,000 isn't perhaps the ideal sample, but it's the reality. It's one of the largest participations we've had in almost any issue I can recall since I've been on council. And I think, you know, we as a council, I think, are the filters. I mean, there's always going to be special interest groups in these issues, there's always going to be petitions, there's the form letters, there's all that kind of stuff that we see in a lot of these issues, and I think we just have to sort of filter that out. That's what we're elected to do. We are elected to make these decisions, and people delegate that authority to us fundamentally, so I don't have problems making decisions based on what's happened, and I take as part of my decision-making, I think, the consideration, the results of surveys and so forth, but it certainly doesn't determine things. This is not a record, this is me exercising my discretion.
Counselor Phil and Counselor Carr.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments from Counselor Elliott, seeing that I'm the main person, but if she thinks that I'm not in the community and listening to other people complain online, watching feedback, and people not being able to make the two engagements, I myself, I was able to make one of the engagements, I wasn't able to make the pop-ups, I appreciate the pop-ups, and I appreciate staff making an effort to get out there. It's not about that. It's about looking at the numbers and seeing that two people are engaged about one issue, and two people are engaged about another issue. And now, the second time I've had a chance to actually engage in this document, I'm being asked to make decisions about really large community issues based on very low numbers. So as wonderful as everybody thinks it is, and I also think it's wonderful, I just wonder, could we have started later? Where's Motus? They were our engagement for not here today. I can't ask them questions directly. I wasn't informed about when the community get-togethers were as far as, I, you know, the community meetings were not filmed. I had no chance to watch and engage in democracy for those meetings. If they were wonderful, that's awesome, but they weren't reported to the community nor filmed, so we weren't able to see what that engagement looked like. So there's a lot of issues that we could do better for the next time. It's been 11 years since we had the last engagement, so to compare it with our community of 20,000 is not accurate. So to sit at this table now and look at the small comments that were made by a few people, I'm not saying that staff did a poor job of engagement. I'm saying that, you know, maybe it was the person, the group that we hired, you know, there's a lot of reasons that it could have happened, and the two engagements that we had had a ton of engagement, and it's great that so many people showed up at the first event, not so much the second event, but it's difficult to make entire decisions on community issues that are so large, growth of the community, expansion of the community, boundaries off such low numbers, when the comments are very specific to the issues and are done by very groups that are very engaged in very particular issues. So also the survey's fabulous job, but the questions, you know, I mentioned the first time, I thought a lot of the questions were biased and led people to very specific decisions. And it's not saying that the, that what we have in front of us is defunct or not the best it could be. I'm saying that these are issues that we have to look at and wonder why or how we could do better for the next time. So it's not dishing anybody, it's asking questions and making sure that we understand that the amount of engagement, despite the fact that we did our best and staff did an amazing job, was not as robust as our community could have done. I blame the community for not being engaged in those issues as well as it could have been, you know, council as well, you know. I think that we should have had more check-in times for that. That would have been fabulous, is having more checkups with which direction the policy was going. And now we have an opportunity to do that, and it seems very little issue related, but, you know, I think it's heading along the right path, but as I'm saying, as one counselor, then it's hard to look at number two and three, next engagement, and make decisions on that.
Counselor Carr.
Thank you. I have to agree with Susan. And I don't mind pressure being put on everybody with questions. I mean, I do find that, you know, some of the areas are kind of, and I'm not going to say needing, but, you know, you ask a question, you know, anyway, I'm not great at surveys, but I know when you ask 30 people a question and the results come back, they can be the results that you want to hear, or they cannot. It's not cut and dried. But on the engagement, how did we engage with the First Nations?
Did you want to speak to First Nations, Linda, if you wanted, or Sarah?
Thanks, Mayor Heitzman. Staff did a very good job, I think, engaging with First Nations. Through Chris Lewis and Josh Joseph, we had a contact that we met with Lisa Wilcox and Kathleen Callow, and then following that, planning staff specifically went to North and to work with Kathleen Callow and her staff on the OCP. In terms of the greater community engagement with First Nations, staff held an informal workshop at Toulon Hall, and just recently sent another letter through to the council, chiefs and councils to ask for an ability to present to chiefs and councils, similar to what staff [inaudible] management plan, and then following that, having a second informal workshop [inaudible].
It's very much prescribed by what they, how they want to receive the information and how they want to be engaged, so we've been really trying to be very responsive to what their needs are.
On the map here, all the bubbles that show where the densities can go, are we taking into account the 3,000 or 4,000 acres that they have around town too, or do we just look at non-out of our lands?
For me, this was just lands that are outside of reserve lands, so this was more related to what the district zoning covers and what development control are, on lands outside of reserves are.
Yeah, what the nations, right from the outset, they said, we'll probably pick and choose exactly where we want to make comments, and not necessarily debrief the whole, the whole OCP, but very targeted on, on issues that are close to their heart and importance to them, so they've been driving exactly where they want to engage, just open to any, any engagement.
And then on the growth strategy, did you look at economics? I mean, I didn't read much on economics, like, you know, but properties are very expensive right now, and one way the planning department told us to get those prices down, is get more things on the market. Was that in the growth strategy?
So let's, we're going to go to the growth management piece next, so just hold that question, and that's part of the conversation.
Thanks. Counselor Carr, go on in the engagement piece?
Yes, engagement. I think that from my observation, my experience, like, the numbers, in terms of raw numbers of people who participate, definitely, you know, probably higher than average, absolutely. So I think that's a good start. I think definitely we can always improve, and, you know, maybe one of the things that we should probably really strongly consider in future rounds, future OCPs, is, you know, doing, having the community advisory committee videotape and kind of run it through more of that committee structure in that way, and that might help to alleviate some concerns around, you know, the transparency of that portion of the process. Because I'd be inclined to agree, like, in comparison with a lot of other things that we do at the district, this one was a little bit more, understand that it was supposed to be at arms length from us as counselors to get involved, and that's fine, but yeah, I think that would be helpful, and then also maybe a tool for the wider community to find their jumping in point, you know, at certain processes. Because, yeah, sometimes people don't, you know, they want to be engaged on, you know, some specific issues of interest, and that's okay, but they may not be along for the whole process, so. And just thinking in general too, one of the things that I think is always challenging with what I've seen from OCPs is, you know, we're getting really good at putting a lot of data in there as far as the population projections and things like that, and, you know, taking that a step further, and perhaps this is going to happen further on down the road, but definitely looking at the economic indicators, right, what are, you know, what are the types of issues that we have in that respect, as well as things such as infrastructure costs, and really getting drilling down into that, you know, if, you know, we consider growth management, getting some fine numbers, like, because I think some people might think, well, oh, yeah, it'd be great, you know, we want to have some trails solidified and all of that, but we need to better understand what is the cost.
You're treading into the next conversation.
So, but I'm saying in terms of consultation, if people don't have the data, it's much harder to form a very informed opinion, right? And I think, you know, as we go forward and in other avenues, I hope that we can develop a capacity to actually have those numbers in a robust fashion, and you may [inaudible].
Just briefly, I take that, those points, absolutely, and I think I was remembering back to the initial stages of the engagement, and we did produce a number of backgrounders that are kind of now, they're still on the project webpage, but that was where I had the very webpage, but that was where at the very outset, we tried to incorporate more data around specific issues, and then certainly, but as we go forward, like, continue through, we definitely need to be bringing data to the decision-making.
Yeah, and then, just the last thing, particularly on the housing piece, understanding, you know, where are the gaps in the housing continuum, and then understanding, you know, what are the, what are the spots and, you know, in terms of tenure, housing form, and cost that we should be looking at? Because it's one thing to say that, you know, supply and demand, we know it's not a magical formula, there's a lot of other factors, especially when it comes to housing, and so I think we need to take a more nuanced approach, which I'm sure everybody can appreciate around the table, as far as addressing housing.
Interestingly, we did talk about how to film, and, you know, in these big meetings, you've got portions of people, and you've got, you know, 18 or 12 different spots where people are commenting on different things. It's really hard to, you can't just have a video and capture everything. We did do some Facebook Live feeds from the engagement that happened a month and a half ago, and, but I think, you know, as technology comes more, we can, we can start to do that more. With regard, again, it's interesting thing, it was, it was a staff technical committee, and I think that's interesting to look at, you know, the pros and cons of having a more council-oriented committee on a OCP type thing. What council was very clear about right from the beginning was the CAC committee, the community advisor committee, was focused on public engagement, and how to communicate with the public. It wasn't focused on policy stuff. The policies were presented, and the committee was there to say, it needs to be in more plain language, looking at the survey results, saying, making sure everything was reflected fairly, and making sure, you know, they came up with the executive summary idea to sort of make sure there's this, there's this easy communicate, easy document that people can communicate, because OCPs are overwhelming to people, they have so many policy pieces in it. So, I think it's all good feedback, and, you know, we try to be introspective, anytime we do public engagement and have a policy document, we try to be introspective on how we do it better next time, how do we, how do we do it the best we can possibly do it. And I do think the public engagement's really strong. It's, it never meets my expectations. And I understand Counselor Shapell's frustration in that, I'd like, it just never meets your expectations. You want every, you want 2,000, 20,000 people in the room. That would be a little crazy, but, you know, and then it does get a little bit driven by special interest groups, all of our decision-making does. And that's why, as Counselor Ray said, that becomes part of our decision-making, but it isn't the foundational key story decision-making, there are many influences that we are considering as we deliberate on, on everything. Yeah, Counselor Carr, move on.
So, just to clarify, I wasn't talking, I was talking specifically about the community advisory committee, and I wasn't saying that there was anything wrong with the structure. I was just saying that, you know, if the meetings were held in this room, you get Kelsey in here and report it.
They weren't always held in this room, but yeah.
That way, you know, there's an opportunity for people, you know, perhaps, maybe there was a, if there was a group that felt like, oh, you guys didn't hear us, and, you know, they could come and address the committee in that way. I don't, I don't want to bog down in a council thing, you know, we have a member of council appointed to be the liaison, and that's fine. I don't think it's about, again, us all sitting around there, but it's, it's more just about the transparency of that portion of the process.
Yeah, that, I agree. Why don't we move on to the growth management piece? Thanks, everybody.
So, a key focus of the Phase 3 engagement was to solicit community input on a long-term growth management strategy, or on options. A policy guide was released with the discussion draft, and it outlined the growth management context, and a survey question was also used to gauge support for three alternatives in growth management approaches. And these are really focused on development in the areas designated for future residential neighborhoods, and on the map, on the screen, those are the dark peach-colored properties on the periphery of our development areas. Option 1 and 2 in the survey question identified minimum population thresholds below which the district would not consider development applications in these future residential neighborhoods. Option 1 established a threshold of 22,500 and directed growth to infill areas. This is mainly, or basically the status quo, except that the threshold was going to be extended from two properties of the northern area of those properties to all of the future residential neighborhoods. Option 2 established a threshold of 34,000 for those properties and direct to growth to infill areas. And then, option 3 would substantially increase the population threshold, although it wasn't identified what that threshold would be, and supports infill, but then also supported limited development in the short to medium term in portions of future residential neighborhoods that were adjacent to existing neighborhoods, when there was a significant, significant community benefit that could be achieved through that development.
Is that clarification?
Yeah, is there some magic to 34,000?
The 34,000 number was our current population plus the estimated capacity that we had within our infill areas to essentially come up with a number that would be where we could develop without going into the future residential neighborhoods.
If I may clarify?
Yeah, go ahead.
The 14,000 was the low, we had a range 14 to 24,000 in capacity, the 14,000 was the low end of the estimate.
On top of the 24,000?
Yes.
And did it, just to clarify, did it, you have low, medium, and high growth rates? Is it within the scope of the OCPs of 2040? Was it the median growth rate, or?
Do you recall?
That is the median.
So, taking the median growth rate and projecting now to 20, the scope of the OCP to 2040, and that's where you come up, also, does that influence, is that 34,000 on that too?
Yes, that's right, that would be the median growth rate to 2036.
Does that, is that based on vacant lands or housing types? How is that number measuring your infill growth rate? How is that done? Is that looked at single-family homes and the possibility of densifying?
Yeah, sure. So, we looked at some of the big brownfield sites we have, such as waterfront landing and the oceanfront lands, those were the kind of big numbers. But we also looked at areas where there are larger lots and older housing stock as having potential. So, it was, it was a bit of a qualitative exercise in that, you know, you'd have to go through a very detailed analysis to find out what the capacity is, but we certainly looked at areas that are seeing redevelopment, and areas that have approved recent large-scale developments.
Thanks.
So, the results from that question, out of the 515 respondents to our questionnaire, 405 answered that specific question, and the responses indicated considerable support for directing growth to infill locations. 16% supported the development, or the threshold of 22,500, which is option 1. 44% supported the threshold of 34,000. So, those groups were interested in supporting development within our infill and not extending into the future residential neighborhoods in the near term. The remaining 40% of respondents were supported allowing some limited development in the future residential neighborhoods, when the significant, a significant community amenity could be achieved through that development. In addition to those responses, there was an additional set of inputs that were specific, not to the future residential neighborhood pieces across the board, but to District Lot 509, 510. So, that was beyond the 515 responses to the questionnaire, and I wanted to talk a little bit more about that specifically.
Can you just go, can you tell me? What are the numbers underneath 178, 413?
Those are the response numbers.
So, how is 178, 44% more than 13, 44%?
That's a good point. Our numbers are incorrect there, and I'm not sure why. Apologies. This, Motus produced the graph for us, and that's pulled from our engagement summary. Does anyone on the table have an answer?
You think it's a 213?
It was the 244. It would be different.
That number 2413 is wrong.
Can we, maybe while we're in the room here, get someone to look at that?
Actually.
The 40% did not include the 244 identical.
No, they were separate.
They were separate, so maybe that 413 is total, I haven't done the math.
Yes, I think that's correct. We actually have another graph we're going to show you in a second that does include those, and I think maybe.
161.
Transposed those numbers to the wrong location.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah, that 413 is the 244 plus the 161, and then 161 makes sense, okay.
Apologies, thank you for catching that.
See, we're, we're confused here.
Can't get anything by you. We'll have another graph that those numbers probably will.
Steve, I have to go, thanks.
So, I just want to speak about this additional set of comments that came in. We received 244 identical feedback forms that were submitted from a single source on behalf of signatories. There was one identical questionnaire, you can see an image of one of the pages of it that had been handwritten, and then photocopied and signed by 244 individuals. There were an additional eight forms with very similar content, but that had been handwritten, and these were submitted to the district as a package.
And during the event or after the event?
This was, this wasn't from the event, this was, we had an extended period after the event where we collected surveys and had people submit online. And these forms were in support of option 3, the limited peripheral expansion, and specifically supported development on District Lot 509, 510. That is the lot encircled in red on the map there, north of the Garibaldi Highlands. Respondents to this, or at least the text in the, in that letter, supported the development in order to provide a new school site, increase housing supply and affordability, provide access to Highway 99 from the Garibaldi Highlands, provide green space, and protect an integrated trail network. And in addition, there were 26 emails to Mayor that Sarah mentioned, 27, well, 26, that specifically provided support for District Lot 509, 510, as well as a letter from the Squamish Seek Society that was submitted in support of that development.
Yeah, if I remember most of those, 26 emails, either with regard to Walder School or the trail network, references specifically.
Just for clarification, the hand, our hard copies in blue are, represent those 27 messages that went right to legislative services. And then, in addition to that, there's a petition that was also received and addressed to Mayor and Council. Thank you, respecting the response.
So, staff struggled a bit with how to incorporate those, that submission into the engagement summary. Ultimately, because the, the responses were specific to District Lot 509, 510, we didn't incorporate them into the calculations that were referenced in the greater future residential neighborhood lands, but we specifically highlighted this submission in the engagement summary, and I believe we included an image of the submission in the engagement summary to try and highlight it. So, we tried to handle it in a way that we thought was appropriate. I would say, though, that this input was carefully considered and has informed staff's recommendation regarding growth management, that will come to you in a minute in this presentation.
Now, hold on there, for a second, Counselor Shapell.
Thanks, that has an official Squamish logo on it. Was that a survey that was put out by our district?
That was.
And then, was filled out once and then copied?
That's right. So, Mayor, that was our survey that we had given out, that you could either do it online or do it on paper, and that was a copy of the survey that had been completed, and then photocopied, and then signed by individuals and submitted.
On this?
So, signed by 240, plus Squamish.
That's right.
Well, we're assuming, they're saying, they're claiming that the people who signed it are saying they're local.
Actually, they, they were in envelopes, some stacked in envelopes with the addresses, and I would have to look at all of them, but I would say they came from Squamish.
The assumption is they're from Squamish.
Yes, yeah, they, they had addresses that were Squamish addresses, so I would say yes, they came from Squamish.
Thanks.
Next slide, okay. And so, if those numbers that, there, that's where those numbers came from, if those numbers were added into the, that graph, this is how the distribution of support for the three different options would look, with 63% in support of option 3, the limited peripheral So, stepping back, when the public feedback on growth management options is assessed as a whole, it appears that there is an opportunity available to balance much of the input that we've received. There is strong community support for a continued focus on growth management that directs development to infill locations. That's something that we saw throughout the, many of the comments. The OCP process also identifies strong support for protection of recreation assets such as trails, protection of green spaces, and taking advantage of the economic opportunities these amenities provide. And with District Lot 509 and 510 in particular, members of the community have expressed support for several potential benefits for development there, including improved connectivity between the Highlands and the highway, a new school site, and additional supply of residential land. So, collectively, these elements could be considered a significant benefit from development on those lands, and that is also the significant benefit concept for allowing development in the future residential neighborhoods, is a concept that did receive support, considerable support in the Phase 3 engagement. So, from that, staff has offered a fourth growth management option based on this input for council to consider. Option 4 involves applying the higher population threshold of 34,000 for future residential neighborhood lands in line with option 2, and to direct growth to infill areas. However, it would identify specifically what would be considered a significant benefit to enable development on a portion of District Lot 509, 510, prior to reaching the population threshold, but would not support early development on the remaining future residential neighborhood lands. And the significant benefits would include the vehicle access from the Highlands to the highway, provision of a new school site, protection of green space, and permanent protection of key trail amenities. So, to understand the trail assets on this property, it's important to consider their location and significance to the community. Through the OCP process, SORCA has identified these trails as a world-class amenity and an economic driver of the local mountain bike community. They provided to the district a map outlining a land development approach for this property that allocates roughly 1/3 to development, which is highlighted in blue on this map, and 2/3 to recreation. And SORCA indicated that this rough allocation would be required for permanent protection of the existing trail network and key potential trail areas on the property. So, staff is recommending development on District Lot 409, 510 be limited to the southwest 3rd of the parcel in line with SORCA's recommendations, and that the generalized development area that's identified in blue here would require further refinement based on input from SORCA, the district, and the landowner.
And that's just 509?
That's, yeah, District Lot 509, 510. The district?
District Lot 510 is the little wedge that's excluded there, is it not? Am I not getting that right? I just looked at our map.
Perhaps I am, yeah. Where's 510?
I think it's misrepresented in our GIS.
Yeah, I think it was when we referred to 509 and 510, it's sort of a historic, both lots, and then that was pre, prior to the school, future school site subdivision, that area has been subdivided.
Something, I think it was a mistake in our GIS. Anyway.
And just one thing I would point out that, well, actually, to review that option 4, and some of the rationale behind the suggestion that staff has used to, to make the recommendation, it seems to provide a growth management, it seems to support growth management supported by the community by directing growth to infill. It maintains the population threshold for the remaining future residential neighborhood lands, where we did not hear community input supporting future development on those lands. Provides an opportunity to secure key community benefits on District Lot, on the District Lot, which reflect the community identity, values, and preferences that have been highlighted through the OCP process. And it's important to note that the green field development will have potential financial implications through the maintenance and operation costs of the servicing there, and so that needs to be weighed against the potential benefits to the community.
And just to make sure this is clear, when it comes into the OCP, it means we envision it potentially being developed within the context of the OCP, so within the 20 years of the OCP. And it doesn't necessarily mean it will be developed year 1, or year 5, or year 10, or year 17, or year 20, it's just within that timeframe, we could conceivably need that growth potential. Is that, make sure we're framing this?
Yeah, so, by providing that policy, if, if growth management option 4 was selected, it would say that the OCP. it would say that the OCP supports development in that area, given the significant benefits that could be achieved, but the decision and timing is one would be clearly at the discretion of Council.
Of the day, yeah.
Yeah, of the day.
Councilor, can I get on this?
So, we're talking about growth management, and I guess the part that I'm struggling with is that this growth management Option Four policy is really just talking about a parcel of land and not about our growth management policy overall. So, how do we do that? How can we not apply the same policy across all of our future neighborhood developments? And so, that's one question. It's, yeah, we're getting lobbied hard about one piece of land, but we're talking about our overall growth management for the district as a whole. And I guess my second question is, with Options One and Two, you put in a threshold, it's a population threshold, that sort of thing, or else that 85% of infill land has been built out, or there's not more than five years of capacity left. But for Option Four, we're just like, we do get an application the next day after we approve this OCP, and I'm not sure if that's what our community is actually asking for as well. So, just, why no threshold, and why are we applying this to all future neighborhoods?
Okay. I think, so, this is a challenging policy to come up with, and every option that we talk about, we end up running into, well, that doesn't quite fit what we're hearing from the community across the board. I haven't, I don't think we were able to come up with one that we felt captured everyone's concerns and addressed them. I think, no matter what we choose, we end up balancing and trading off on some of the interests we heard from the community. So, specifically to options that you mentioned, the threshold would apply, the idea of this option is to apply a threshold that is high, because it seemed that there was quite a bit of support from the community to focus on infill. But at the same time, it seemed that, from the community, we were hearing a lot of support for the concept that there are amenities on that piece of property that justified some development on it. So, we could, we could have, an alternative would have been to go with Option Three and say, if there's a significant benefit, we should consider development on some of these future residential neighborhoods, and that would be a consistent approach. But, we didn't hear anyone say that they wanted to go into any of the other future residential neighborhoods. And so, trying to balance that, we tried to say, well, it seems like this one had unique attributes because of the assets on the land. I don't know if that answers your question, but it was a struggle for us.
And I want to, we're here, staff's still got more slides to go through, and I just want clarifying questions, because we'll get into the debate about the frozen constant line. We're not at that point in the conversation yet. It's a clarifying question. I've got a whole list of people. So, I'll let Karen just continue with her questions, and then I have Ted, Susan, and Jason.
Just a quick follow-up. You know, I know about 509 and 510 because people have been talking about it, but I, you're right, I don't know about 512, 513, because no one's talked about it. But that doesn't mean that people don't start talking about it if we put this kind of growth management policy in place. That's my concern, is that we should be developing a policy that applies across, and maybe there is still room for our Council today to have discretion. So, anyway.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, do you, are you suggesting that you would like to see the opportunity for development if there are significant benefits on any of those future residential neighborhood lands? Is that kind of the thought of the consistency that you feel is missing in the Option Four?
I don't know enough about those properties to say that there aren't significant opportunities. So, if we're going to apply it here, we've got to be really careful, because I think landowners will show up at our door the next day going, I have great opportunities as well. And so, that's what I'm nervous about, is that suddenly we lose complete control of this, because everyone's going to find a way to justify away their property, and then we've got infrastructure stretching in multiple directions out to the boonies that I'm not sure that that's what I've seen in the verbiage in the comments that I ran.
Yeah, I'll just quickly go to Yonah and then go back to Karen.
Just to add to the rationale why we've included Option Four is, the Lot 509 and maybe 510 seem, they are a little different geographically where they're located. So, if you were to look at the rest of these lots for future residential areas, they're not as connected. We've got growth in the Highlands as well as on Tantulus Road, and that one-third would be providing a connection. So, it's, if you take a look at all of these other future residential areas, if you were going to, if you were going to open a door, phase it, like a phased approach, Lot 509 would probably be the first one, and especially that corner of it. So, it's not just the trail network, it's providing the opportunities to connect our infrastructure and the transportation linkages that will open up with that.
So, again, questions for clarification purposes, trying to stay away from opinion at this point. We're going to debate this. Doug, I'm sorry, Ted and Doug.
Good point, Karen. Yeah, so, on the infrastructure on 509-510, if we go with Option Four, are we allowing all infrastructure to be connected, or are we holding back?
If Option Four was selected, it wouldn't say that that development was approved. It's leaving the Option Four Council to choose at some point to move forward.
But somebody designing infrastructure on their property for future growth, you know, they might need, instead of 42 acres, they might need 61 acres to get the infrastructure designed down, so.
I mean, that's, that'll be the next step, you know. This is just a go-no-go question. Do we open this up or not? Then the details will have to be figured out through the subarea planning process.
Thank you. So, the question part, and I guess with Options Three and Four, it's why it is restricted to just those properties on the east side of the highway, and so, you think about growth potential areas, I mean, Chikai Fan, for example, right now, I think is an OCP area or something like that, I can't remember exactly. But nevertheless, there's lands there, and why would not this policy apply to something like that, or possibly other areas around? And why would it be focused, I have the same question, you've already answered it once, but I don't have to answer it again, but why would it just be focused on one lot? I think of Quest University, nobody anticipated that coming, and all of a sudden there was a huge benefit, and something like that or a similar opportunity could pop up almost anywhere in the district. So, do we necessarily want to confine this, sort of this escape clause, if you like, to this one property as opposed to other properties? But I'm curious about why it's just, even just 509, 510, and 512, I think was the other one that had that coloring, and why would we look at other parts of the district?
Okay, for that one, let's go to the map for a second here. So, the coloring, there's actually more than just the 509, 510, and I think it's 513. There's a few more pieces down further to the southwest of Quest that are in that future residential neighborhood's designation. The Chikai development that's currently proposed with the barrier structure, we, because there is an application going on at this point, and a subarea planning process going on there, we did not want to put on an additional OCP barrier for them, and so, we've left them in the same situation they are in the previous OCP land designations, with the thought that if the subarea plan is adopted, then that would then change the designation and move forward. There was a process going on there, and we thought we would leave that process to its own accord. And then, additional lands in that area are restricted industrial, and there is a policy in the OCP that says, if in the event a mitigation structure is constructed, then a subarea planning process should be done for those lands and identified the best use moving forward. So, we didn't want to presuppose the barrier being put in place. We left that planning to be done at a later point. And then, remaining lands within the area, there's significant lands adjacent to the current crop of woods development, but those already have zoning for single-family development. So, these peach-colored parcels are the most likely future residential lands that are identified outside of Chikai and the area north of Crumpet Woods.
Also, anecdotally, those are all lands that are designated in the current OCP for future subarea planning on the Schedule Five.
Yeah, so, we're not.
They've long been identified.
There's no intention through this policy to add layers on to pieces that currently don't have OCP restrictions, but we're contemplating taking off some OCP restrictions on some lots that currently have, that are specific to the specification threshold policy of that set.
Well, if I just may add to that, the lot that's north of Crumpet Woods currently doesn't have any OCP restrictions. We are proposing that a subarea planning process be included on that lot to make sure they won't be getting the diversity of housing.
Doug, did you have another call?
No, none for now, thanks.
I'm wondering if somewhere in the OCP, there's any mention of a trails master plan. I find doing this in isolation, based on just the, exactly what Council earlier, Council raised brought up, in isolation of three distinct groups of land, having, I'm just not sure of taking these three pieces of land and just making growth expansion things, and population caps are very arbitrary. We really need policy in place that reflects community values and allows us a way to negotiate our policy needs with land developers and as an overarching policy that respects trails and community needs, even DCC fees, and there's a big policy piece missing, and I haven't seen that in the OCP.
So, question, Councilor, can I just, Councilor Schubert? No, no, we have, we have a master plan, a Squamish trails master plan. Do you, is it?
Policy related to, we have nothing that sets policy forward in negotiating land deals. We do it individually.
Okay, so, okay, so, I just want to point, because we do have master plans for trails, it's just.
It shows where they are.
And it shows some compatibility and a whole bunch of policy stuff, but that's not what you're looking for. I just want, you said master plan.
That's not what I'm looking for.
We have one, but you're looking for something in terms of how do we secure the assets we're talking about?
How do we, in our growth plan, secure community values with trails as an asset that is to be reviewed under every single time a developmental application comes in, instead of.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, great, great question.
Thanks.
So, there, we have been meeting with a group of trails representatives through the process, and they've made some really good input. One of them, we missed getting into this draft, but we identified that, and it has to come to the next draft, but I can tell you three things that are in there that I think might address what you're talking about. The first is that the trails group has asked, or the trails groups have asked, that a trails referral body be established, and that they be referred applications for their review so that they can provide coordinated information based on a holistic plan of trails in the community. And so, that's something that we would like to put into the OCP as policy, that that be considered the establishment of that group. That's one. Another one is, in actually a very recent meeting, we identified, and we haven't put it into GIS yet, but we identified what we're going to call, or are calling right now, a recreational trails backbone, that is essentially the necessary connections through the community to ensure that our different areas of trails are well-connected and form a network that is usable by community and visitors. And, you know, that's one of the reasons Chima has a particularly unique role in these areas. It does form a very critical connection between some of our trail areas. And then, a third point is that the OCP does have a no net loss, and I can't remember if we actually, one of the items the trails groups were suggesting is that not only should there be a no net loss, but there should be a net gain of quality and character.
Diversity.
And like that, if a trail is, a nice biking through the forest trail is lost, that it is replaced with a trail that has that character of at least of equal length and value.
May I follow up with that?
So, I agree, those are all great ways to start, and I cannot agree more about having a trails referral body, but they need a policy document that is robust to be able to, like other committees that we have, be able to ensure that that policy is being maintained when the, when the proponent starts putting forward a development. As well, it doesn't, without that policy piece, it ends up being arbitrary. So, in order to ensure both the developer and the trails group have policy to work off, that policy needs to be, and maybe they start working off the trail plan. The no net loss is a great idea, but how do you ensure that when trails have been developed outside a policy on private land? They can just say that they didn't exist in the first place because they weren't given permission. So, measuring that is difficult. I like what's being done with, with what service put aside, but I don't want to have to go through that with every single developer, that we have this private group negotiating with the land use owner, and then it's not actually based on Squamish policy. It has to be overarching policy, and it's not just, you know, this is what we came up with, with this land developer, but maybe that group is a great.
So, it sounds like, and I'll probably refer this to Linda and Gary, is that we're setting out sort of the beginning of how we prescribed this through the OCP, but an add dim or in addition to our trails master plan or some other policy piece needs to be more, much more clear. I think the OCP is articulating, we'll consider growth in these areas, specifically 509-510, because they have all these amenities that we can secure through the process of result and master plan. So, we just need, I think, a piece that sort of connects that idea with the OCPs. The OCP will start to articulate it, but we need to either add an appendix or amend our trails master plan so it's clear.
And so, it's overarching.
Yeah, but I think it's a whole other policy piece that needs to be developed. Once we get the OCP sort of dialed in, that'll inform the next piece, and we'll have to budget for it, obviously, and all that stuff.
I'd like to see that into the 2018 budget, to set up the trail users group and make sure that we do have adequate financing to develop those policy pieces that are critical to those connections.
I have one slightly off comment that I just want to make. SORCA had offered to have a representative here to talk to the nature of trails on this parcel, and I know that Tim Televigus here had a timing crunch and was able to be here till 2:30.
We managed to stretch that.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we're at the right time to start talking to you.
Yeah, we are, we are open up to whoever wants to speak, so, maybe we'll just try to get through those slides, and if you are.
Yeah, I've got a little 45 minutes.
If you are meeting a time crunch, just articulate.
Yeah, for sure. I think it's better to wait until we're at a more appropriate, maybe go a little deeper first.
Awesome, thanks, Tim. I have Jason and Karen again.
So, in B.C., what's the sort of typical timeline around revisions to an OCP? So, specifically, when would we expect to revise this OCP next?
Very.
Do you, just for clarification, through the mayor, are you talking about sort of the next OCP review? It's usually on a five-year cycle.
Yeah, the province, I think, says ideally on a five-year cycle, but within five to 10 years is where most people end up doing it. And then, we'll be looking up to 2045 or 2043.
I just wanted to go back to why we're looking for that threshold on Option Four.
So, Option Four, perhaps I was not clear. Option Four, it would have a threshold of 34,000 for all the properties, but the Chima, the 509 lands would have a significant benefit option that could allow development on it ahead of the threshold. It would be the unique property that has that option.
Within a certain.
But what I'm wondering is why, it's already got a population cap of 22,000. We have lots of opportunity for infill, but basically, we're saying, for everyone else, it's 34,000, and for this piece of land, it's 34,000, but the day after we approve this OCP, we'll accept your application. And that's the part that I'm totally, can you clarify that?
Yeah, that is a really good point, and actually, we presented this to the CAC group, and that was their concern, that why was that there a change? And so, we didn't have time to incorporate it into the SAP report because it was already off, but one of the things that we had thought is if this topic came up, we could suggest what the CAC suggested, which was to incorporate the 22.5 cap that is already on, or threshold that is already on that property and the adjacent property, and have that as a threshold, that once past that threshold, then that. that once past that threshold, then that significant benefit option could kick in. So, that is another way that that can be incorporated, and staff thought, oh yeah, that's actually pretty good, and we did not think of that at the time.
Can you go to the option for map that you had up there, just so I understand it? So, the red line is the whole of the 509-510.
I think there's a little bit cut off on the rate, but it's most of it, yes.
And so what option four is suggesting, consideration, possible consideration in blue area because of community benefit at any time, theoretically, but a 34,000 cap on the whole thing, but within that blue area, there's an option for development right away. What you're saying is you could also say that blue area still has that 22.5 threshold as well.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to speak to the economic aspect of that.
Can we, do you have more slides? You do.
Yeah, just a few.
Yeah. Why don't we get through the slides and move? Why don't we get through the slides? Let's get through the slides.
Yay. So, I just wanted to interject, and I think this will also just add a little bit to the conversation. So, as we've said, for any future development for these long-term future residential neighborhood lands, we require a subarea plan process that would comprehensively review and go through all the analysis that would identify all of the different types of attributes and values of any given area within the community. We just wanted to reiterate, so this detailed work, we are in advance of that. But given that the existing policy, and we haven't done that because, of course, the existing population threshold policy is in place that is restricting subarea planning and development of these lands. However, we're in a place right now with the OCP and trying to squarely address growth management and trying to determine the best path to address our growth management priorities, sustainable land development over time. And through our OCP process, it's really forcing us to have a closer look and begin to consider the different attributes and values. So, we just wanted to highlight these, that, you know, we're not dealing necessarily only with trails values, but it's important to bring to light many other types of attributes and values that we have here. So, the next few slides just show that. So, firstly, I just wanted to ensure that council and the community understand too, we have terrain considerations that play into this. So, this is the property area of District 509-510 with our terrain model turned on with the slopes, and there's also a trails overlay too, so you can orient yourself. Essentially, we do have longstanding district policy around steep slope land development, and so you'll see the steepest slope areas in red, those are over 40%, and then as you go to orange, it's 25 to 40%, and yellow is 25% or less. And essentially, through our land use policy or land development policy in our official community plan currently, you know, we generally do not consider lands over 40% suitable for development. Our policy highlights that lands between 25 and 40 are more suitable for multi-unit development, and anything under 25% suitable for single unit detached development, detached housing. So, you can, you can get a sense, and, you know, we don't want to get lost in the weeds here, but we just wanted to highlight the different types of considerations that there are for future development. And also, this goes to show sort of some of the considerations that in addition to trails, you know, as we've looked at and proposed based on some of the Sorka recommendations, that northwest sector, you know, you'll see that there are some of the more developable areas are shown there as well. But again, through future subarea planning, that's where this would all be detailed. On our GIS, you can also turn on the water course assessment areas, so in blue you can get a feel for the water courses that are currently on site or in, within this area. The buffer area that's applied there is 30-meter water course assessment, and so you, again, you can sort of get a sense of the other types of values. We just wanted to make sure that there's, that the community and council are, you know, alive to the many values there. We don't want to, you know, it's easy to sort of consider one value and attribute, but we just want to expand the information. So, this is another layer, sort of a snapshot of environmentally sensitive areas through our ESA mapping. So, the, sort of the lighter green are medium sensitivity and the darker green are higher sensitivity lands. That's not to say that all of these lands are completely undevelopable, but these are the, these are the rankings that have been applied, and then I've got the water course buffer layer turned on to that. Sort of get a sense of where this is. And then in terms of the recreational trails layer, you can see through our GIS, we do have those mapped, so as Matt pointed out earlier, through discussion with Sorka, we know that there are many backbone kind of connector trail assets in this area, and you can see that with the highlighted lower western, southwestern area highlighted. And then this is a composite, you know, it's very busy, but I just wanted to sort of show the composite with both the terrain, the water courses of the trails. So, lots going on, and this is not uncommon for any of our lands. Development is complex, and so we just wanted to bring that to council's attention, just broaden the conversation. So, this is the last slide that we had, Mayor, and we had two recommendations in front of council in the staff report. The first was to receive the Phase 3 engagement summary for information, and then we also put forward a proposed recommendation around advancing long-term growth phasing option four for the final draft of the OCP update, as outlined in the staff report. However, there are alternative recommendations before council today. If council is interested to, in making a decision around this today and providing some direction, it could be another, another one of the options that have been previously outlined through our growth management strategy. Also, if it's the greater comfort of council to refer this to another committee meeting for further discussion, of course, that is an option too, or any other option at council. And just to say that, you know, it definitely doesn't majorly interfere with the overall project timeline. This is, growth management is, this part of the OCP is some of the most in-depth, detailed crux items that we dealt with this time, so.
Now, Councilor Gary had a question about how do we consider economic growth within our growth management policies up here in South Dakota?
Well, yeah, sure, I'm gonna start there.
Can I clarify, is that, to you, Mayor, is that a question about economic impact to the district?
Well, that's part of it. I mean, so infrastructure, how far does the infrastructure, depending on, we're looking at all the beach colored properties, you brought up infrastructure for the three of them. But I'm particularly interested in, like, when we capped this property five years ago, I fought hard for this property not to come in for the development decisions there.
This is capped a long time before five years ago.
No, but it came up to us when I was on the council, and we shut it down.
Oh, you told me that, yeah.
Councilor Ray was in favor of it, and we fought hard, and we said, no. I always regretted that because all of a sudden, there was nothing to buy. You know, we didn't have lots for sale, and the prices were going up, and I thought, well, that was a mistake. And, you know, and so economically.
Okay.
So economically, we created hardship in the community for people wanting to buy because there was all of a sudden nothing to buy. And so, I just wondered with the growth management, do we keep, do we account for that?
Okay, so he's talking more about supply of housing versus economic developments? Yeah.
So, yes, we do consider that, and actually, there's a limited demand, and so it's very important in this whole strategy to make sure that if we're prioritizing infill, which we know we have tons of opportunities and there's projects on the go that are in the pipeline, that if we allow housing to occur somewhere else, that is taken away from infill. So, that's one, one aspect. You know, the capacity that we have between 14 and 24,000, population-wise shows us that there is lots of capacity in the community to accommodate the medium-term demand for housing.
And I think, I think we're, it's the type of housing and all that sort of thing. I think that's what council is weighing, is the supply-demand issue. Anyway, we'll get to the debate in a minute. Susan, Karen.
Yeah, I'm interested in that. I'm interested in that, you know, that we have tons of land for development. We're a community of 12 kilometers, so to say we have tons of land, when you look at the outside desire to live in our community and the amount of people that are coming here, I would agree that we have a lot of houses on the bus right now, but relying on people to sell their bigger properties and develop them is not lots of housing. You can imagine whatever you want, but they may never sell those homes, and they may never actually put those, you know, infill market. That is relying on people leaving our community and moving to smaller pieces, or giving their land away to developers to develop infill is not something that I feel comfortable relying on for future development, or for, to say, to add that to saying that we have a lot, to make a statement about capacity reliant on large family, single-family homes selling to make money.
Yeah, entering the debate here, yeah.
So, I just, you know, with that containment boundary and slightly artificial speculation, I wonder, without, yeah, I'm going to enter into the debate stage, so I'm just going to wait, I'm going to hold off my comments.
Yeah, I think, but that's my consideration. Valid questions about.
Measurement.
The types of housing and the mix of housing and how we phase that in, valid questions about that. And there's, and 509, 509-510 are not the only potential for single-family homes. We built one two weeks ago, a small one, but there's a number of others, so valid, all valid, and that's, and we'll get into the debate on that. Gary, did you have your hand up?
Yes, just, I mean, the vast majority of those numbers for the infill development come from major developers, whether it's Oceanfront, Waterfront, Scott Crescent, Skyridge. We aren't, our vast, the vast majority of supply is not dependent on individual homeowners coming forward and sudden lots of developers. It's with folks that are in the business.
Yeah. And we could get the exact numbers, you know, 70% is new development, 30% is redeveloping large lots. I don't know, we could get those numbers. But as Gary says, it's not a significant contributor to our capacity for infill. Any more questions? And I actually, where I thought Councilor Prior was going, but he, so with regard to economic development within the idea of growth management, most of our growth management policies center around residential development and residential sprawl and, and cost of infrastructure and our financial ability to afford all that infrastructure that supplies pipes and roads and everything to services. So, with regard to economic development within that growth management, we don't really necessarily are restricting or anything with regard to economic development and the growth management to be started.
By restricting economic development, do you mean the supply of land available for those opportunities?
Yeah.
No, well, the, the lands that we're talking about with growth management primarily are the future residential neighborhood lands, and those lands are supported for neighborhood uses, which can include economic activity, shops and services, you know, range there. I think that perhaps one thing that, from review of the last council discussion, discussion on growth management, that we missed in the current draft is that we don't have a subarea planning item that requires the provision of employment lands within, or commercial lands within the residential neighborhoods when those are developed. And so that's something that, from that last discussion, we've highlighted that needs to go into subarea planning to make sure that that is added when we do subarea planning. I think that was a miss. But I don't see something that restricts, you know, off the top of my head, that restricts those opportunities.
Yeah. So, and I'm wondering if we want to do something that actually influences the ability, so take for example, Business X comes into town, and we just don't have the land base, whether it's like industrial or maybe industrial, or maybe it's something else, high-tech hub near customers, I don't know, but we don't have that. Would we want to have policies that basically say, maybe this, maybe 510, 511, maybe 513 or 527, or whatever number it is? Maybe we want to say X amount is actually going towards employment lands. You know, they could have a little, a small business park hub up in that area because we're running out of space down in the areas that are currently designated. Like, do we want to actually acquire some employment lands through these development areas?
We could certainly, in the subarea planning criteria list, identify that as one of the considerations, the opportunity to mandate.
I'd like to expand on that, I think also, beyond the subarea planning criteria, which identifies what has to be, you know, assessed and reviewed in detail, we do have other policy within the discussion draft that's being proposed that is focusing on increasing opportunities for employment, addressing employment, housing needs, focusing on mix of uses within neighborhood nodes, and also just all-round working to support increased employment densities and a better balance of jobs and housing. So, I think overall, from that policy perspective, a lot of those key directions are there already, but it's also just tying into the subarea planning and making sure that for future residential neighborhoods, and maybe that's the issue we were thinking, like, maybe it's sort of future mixed use neighborhoods, or future neighborhood areas, just not saying residential, recognizing that they're mixed. Councilor Schepel?
Which leads me to another point. In the OCP, employment is very weakly represented, and there's a lot of talk about neighborhood hubs, but not a lot of talk about the employment, the employment land strategy recommended, that we don't lose any, we've lost a ton, we don't really understand the mix right now. So, we're talking about a lot of ground floor retail space still being implemented. We still want a lot of policy surrounding the actual needs of professional space versus industrial space and that mix of employment lands. When you do neighborhood hubs, that leaves out industrial, that leaves out light industrial. It means commercial, maybe ground floor coffee shop in the neighborhood, and I just wonder where in the OCP it actually interests us.
So, there's a whole bunch of policy pieces in the OCP that aren't in front of us today just because it's too big of a conversation. We're already half an hour over our time.
I agree with that initial.
And then, oh, we have a lot of documentations that are dovetailing into the OCP, our plan strategy, a whole bunch of others as well. But that will be, I mean, this is just the beginning of trying to drill down some policy issues, but we'll be getting a whole OCP and all of those statements. It's quarter to three, we were supposed to be done by 2:15, so we need to.
Yeah. I just thought, watch with that one piece.
And then I'll make sure, Tim or whoever else wants to speak to it, go ahead.
Thanks, and I just, I just want to make the point that if our documents are not updated to actually reflect our current land base, then we will need financing to actually update those plans.
Absolutely. I think the OCP will highlight a whole bunch of policy pieces that need updating. Karen?
I was going to put a motion on the table, just so we can do the comments, but if you'd want it to.
Yeah, I'm going to go to Tim and Mr. Chima, and please put your hand up. Try to be really succinct with your comments. Tim, you're welcome to, anyone's welcome to come to the table, if there's a chair or you could go to the podium, either or, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Let me sit down. Hi, I'm Tim Tolevi. I'm here representing Sorka today, but also just for my own interest as well. So, I was involved in writing the OCP recommendations from Sorka's point of view. I just want to touch on a few of those things first before we go into the specifics very quickly. Some of the things, the net gain policy is one of the ones that we've been kind of struggling with for a while. We've been talking about a no net loss policy, which is great, but we're realizing these developments are coming to town, and we're talking thousands and thousands of people, and a large number of them are coming here because of the trail network. So, we're putting a lot more demand for both space to ride on and impact on the trails. So, we need to find a way to establish the value that these trails have and fund them. So, that comes into the next line on that as a long-term funding strategy of some sort. There's a few different ways to do that. CACs or DCCs even, because they are an asset to the community. And it's really hard for us. We do all the maintenance on the trail network and we do get money from the district. We've had it every year, but it's not a guarantee. So we don't know how much money we're gonna get next year to maintain these trails. And that's a real struggle that we have on an annual basis. We've already touched on the trail advisory panel. I see that being something similar to the advisory design panel. Something that has some teeth, something that has a bylaw written around it that we can actually put forward as the experts in the area. And I'm not talking just Sorka, we have to get together with the other trail groups to make sure we're all on the same page, representing the options that work for all of the trail groups in town. And we feel it's a good way to do it. It's something that's official. We're sitting down in a room in an official capacity, not just, it's not just a beer-drinking club anymore. It's gotta be a little bit more legislated than that at this point. And we want to get out of having.
Not to denigrate beer-drinking clubs.
No, no, we're good with that, and we're still gonna do that. We have to get the people that are interested in getting down, sitting in this room and putting this together, something that's hard and fast, that we can then go to the developers. Because we've been doing this, where we go back and forth. We have developers calling on us to get our opinions and support. And it's really challenging because it's not really our role. We're kind of getting pulled in different directions. And we want to have something that we can refer to, rather than having to make it up as we go every time. A lot of this is coming from the mountain bike impact studies. I'm sure you guys have seen some of the results of this, right? There's a lot of people coming here to ride. It's totaled about $10 million in spending annually. And that's been going up quite a lot every year. So it is a significant contribution. A lot of people are moving here to ride. And that's why we see lands like Bocina's lands, University lands, all that. They're valuable because they're really close to the trail network. And if we start cutting into that trail network, we're killing the asset that people are coming here to participate in. So that's a real challenge that we see moving forward, for sure. That map that we produced, that basically is anything outside of that map, the purple area. And I, we fully understand that there's a lot more to it than just the bike trails, of course. And we've gone through this, we've gone back and forth. The areas above that, outside of the blue area to the north, that connect up to the next crown land above that and around the periphery, that, those trails are world-class. People are coming from all over the world to ride those trails. They're coming down out of what is kind of a crown land area. There's quality trails up there connecting to the whole greater area. It's not the same when you go and develop those areas to say you can have an eight-meter-wide buffer on either side of the trail or you can pop it out into a neighborhood. We want to see it maintained as a trail network area. Now, that blue line is, you know, obviously that's up for adjustment, of course. But we had to kind of come up with something that, and that's the road. Basically, the blue line follows on the bottom right-hand side. That follows a Perth. And then at the first Y, where you can see the other road going straight north, bends down, goes through the S's and down over to Dowand Road. So that's an existing road bed. This seems like a natural spot. It's right at the bottom of the steep slope area. We wanted to get something in here that gives a representation of areas that are not going to affect the character of that network. Obviously, there's some trails in there that are key connector trails that we can reroute, we can make work. But the areas above that are an area that we feel needs some more protection to maintain the character of trails in Squash. So I don't really have anything prepared. I just wanted to kind of get that out today and sort of say what we came to, but I'm happy to answer questions about that, where we came up with any of that.
Any questions on the, on the trails?
So have you worked with the landowner on this particular piece of land?
On this particular map, no, but we have had talks over the year, over several years, for sure. We did have a representative of Sorka who wasn't on the board, but he has met with them about this. The map, like I say, is representative of the general area that we see no conflict with or very little conflict with.
But because it's deemed a special purpose area or whatever, Tony called it, because it had assets for the community, do you feel as though you're working well with the property owner to address these kind of?
Well, this is where we're struggling with this a little bit. We're, we, we will work with property owners because there is no formal process in place to avoid having to do that, right? We're forced now to work with various property owners. We're a volunteer organization, so we don't really have the capacity to do this. Like, this is outside, I'm here on a workday, you know, and we all are. We're all volunteers. We're trying to make it, to work as best we can. But there's a lot of pressure from not just one developer, there's a lot of developers that we deal with on a regular basis to try to make suggestions that make sense, that everybody can live with, but it's a, it's a challenge for us, for sure. Now, specific to this map, we were talking about significant community amenity, right? If we're talking, what is a significant amenity to the community? That's the rest of those trails in that land, that's a significant amenity. So we're identifying that amenity, basically.
To me, it's everybody working together to get a really nice trail network and a really nice suburb.
Absolutely.
That's what it is to me.
And we see.
We're getting way ahead of ourselves.
Yeah.
We need to outline those parameters within the OCP and within our policies and Council's codes, and but we're getting, we have, we have. Counselor Elliott, Counselor Spah.
Tim, thanks for being here today. Has Sorka started putting its mind to how it would rate the trails in terms of their values so that we're doing a net gain or certainly no net loss, that we've got some way of rating the trails?
Yeah.
And there was lots of that in the previous comments and also staff mentioned that as well.
Yeah, so we're working on that in a couple of different angles. And it's really, it is tough to quantify. But Trailforce, which is an organization in town here, or a bike, paint bike, they are developing heat maps so they can track what are the popular trails, what trails get the most usage, right? So.
You're sweating more. We're working harder.
It is a great way to sort of figure out where riders are riding. Surveys are good, too. Surveys are a part of it. And like I say, we're, we're a volunteer organization. So one of the things we're doing, at the last meeting, we talked about hiring a full-time staff member for Sorka. And that would be one of the key parts of that role, is to really try to quantify what the values are in the network, what people want to ride, what they are currently riding. I know anecdotally, I can say that zone is one of the favorite areas. And when you start looking at what's in the movies and pictures and videos out there, a lot of it's that zone, and, well, it's everywhere, but we're seeing a lot of that. It's the views of House Adam and the Chief and everything that you get.
And it's the most accessible from the highlands.
And it's right in town. That's the other area, too, as well, for sure.
Thanks. Susan.
Thanks, and the mayor already said this. I, you know, to task a community organization with valuing a healthy community asset is, it's vulnerable. That's the only thing that I can say is just to, you know, they're not experts in land use policy. They're trail builders and an advocacy group. And if they are forced to negotiate with every single owner, you're gonna get different outcomes every time. They need a piece of policy that doesn't say that they should value the trails. We just value trails, it's a community asset. We need to value it in our, I think it should become a DCC, where every, it's not just one developer saying, I have to give this amount. It should be all developers contributing to the well-being of our trail network and a way to fund positions like Sorka needs in order to get that policy in place. And then that trail referral body as well to look at our policy piece and leave a place in the OCP that bookmarks where this piece of policy is gonna go and not close the OCP, vote on it, and then get it through, but leave a place where we can actually agree to have that piece, policy piece implemented into the OCP when it's ready.
What I understood from what Counselor Elliott said was that if Sorka could say, you know, trail A is world-class trail, we get, you know, twenty, thirty percent more people riding this trail than we do trail B. In our planning analysis, and I agree that, you know, we don't want to tax volunteers, but in our planning analysis and the process that a developer may go through with the community, trail A would be like, no go, can't touch it. Trail B might be, we only get maybe ten percent of the people going there. We could move trail B a little bit as long as we maintain the character and something else. So I don't think Counselor Elliott was suggesting that, that.
No, I didn't think that.
Well, that's what it sounded like. So I just wanted to, yeah, I thought it's Tim.
I can kind of follow up on that a little bit. The challenge with that is it's, it's a little bit black and white when you do that to, to say one over the other. And that's why we feel that the advisory panel is a better way to go on that because we can talk with the developers and say, okay, you want to put a road here. Instead of saying, trail A is there, no, no go, well, you can't build the road. And that doesn't work for the development community. I'm part of that, too, so I kind of play on both sides of this. The, the better way is to look at it holistically and get together with the developers and say, okay, well, what, what can we do here? How can we move this? How can we make it work to create a top-quality network? Just saying one trail needs to be protected at the expense of another one.
No, and I didn't just say that.
I know, but that's how it ends up coming out in the wash, where there is more room to get a better product at the end of the day if there's a body there that can.
Yeah, no, I think everyone thinks of having some sort of advisory body and way of him putting into any development, whether it's this side or any other side.
Right.
I think so that technology, like, to mention Trailforce, but heat maps and IT that is available to actually measure the use of the trails is extremely valuable but very subjective because ten percent of the population that's gonna advertise a fabulousness of Squash may be using the most extreme trails, whereas commuters and people that are using blue and green trails are, are out there all the time and may actually make up the bulk, but aren't doing the economic development piece because they're not out there making films and movies about trails.
That's part of what we have to figure out.
We're getting way off-topic. It's really interesting, and I think it just proves the point. We need to further refine this as we develop our policy. So thanks, Tim. Mr. Chima, if I may ask?
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
And if you, if anyone else is watching. This is okay, they're sitting at the table, don't be. We'll make sure they move in when they come. Just pass me on, pass them around. Welcome.
Thank you. I know this is late, I'm gonna try to be short.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay. We want to talk about the survey a little bit, you know, starting from the beginning when this came online. You know, why people not engage, Ted said. When the survey came first online, within about 24 hours, the wording got changed. That's why public doesn't trust stuff, and that's why public doesn't engage. And the wording gets changed after 24 hours.
Yeah, we've addressed that issue. It was, the draft that hadn't been changed was put on. I think we had one responded and maybe two or three people that had actually seen it. So it wasn't a dramatic thing, and if you ask, 99% of people in town, they would be.
I'm gonna just speak through the record.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's on the record already. We've talked about it before.
The council knows that. So, so the wording got changed, the wording changed to bias, okay? The way Ted said, there was bias, that's why people didn't respond. That's why this, after this bias wording was changed in 24 hours, we questioned the staff, staff said that there was some more information came in. So in 24 hours, the information doesn't come out, okay? So this was changed to something, certain things, we don't want to go to the next step, so. But after talking to the people, then, then we said this is, the way the wording is not dressed issues in five oh nine, five thirteen, now on to a little land and five ten. The wording, then we talked to the people in the community, we wrote something, the wording on the same page. Then we give to the people to think about it, sign it, give it back or mail it, whatever is gonna be, okay? So there was open houses, we gave and handed in those wording. I can even tell you right now, you read the wording, he read whatever the answer he want to read in the, in the staff here right now, in the planning department. He never read, never read things at the top. And then the wording saying clearly it's no threshold, any land, five oh nine, five thirteen, five ten. He read the portion at the bottom. Like, sometimes they made the question, they want to answer what they want to answer from there. The way, you know, Ted was saying it. We have to be, when public spoken, where the answer is public spoken, if you talk for the public spoken, if you do those numbers, number will come, 38% of people doesn't want any threshold in any land. That's public spoken. You know what, the way they want to do it, even.
And then please don't reflect it on they want to do it. We're not here to point fingers. Articulating disclosure, that's fine with what's said, but please don't point fingers.
When I have the draft here, saying that they came after, that was done by planning department. Then we have argument in here Thursday, then they changed the wording. How can the public trust when you put something saying this came after, this little river on the weekend?
Hey, Mr. Chima, you're gonna have to move on because we really are out of time.
Okay, then we can, we can do a next step. Do you want to hear the whole thing or?
I just, you've already said it, we've heard it.
If you don't have time, I have to explain everything because then there's gonna be less information to console making a decision or base something big. If you don't have a time, we can set the time another time because you're pushing.
We can do it in September.
I just spoken not even two minutes. You said twice for the time.
I know, but you've repeated yourself a couple of times. I'm just trying to move you on. We've heard that you don't like the wording, we've heard that you think it's biased. We hear that you think it's, it's channeling a decision a certain way. We've heard that already, absolutely, so. Why don't we let Mr. Chima?
Okay, I was just gonna ask him a question.
Yeah.
So we have the copy of the draft here. Those letter came from individual people came through the mail. They, because we knew when the wording would change, the computer people, there's something out right here, okay? That's why we told people, give to us, we collect, we will give to the city, okay? They came in each envelope, signed by each person. Anybody can phone those people, they are tick marked by them, signed by them, their addresses. Why they not count of this? Because when we talking with you, the number is very low, 500. There are not 300 people, we have a record. 300 people signed the survey to the city, okay? There's 110 people petitioned, this was not part of that, too. This number is very higher than you, you, they're reporting, you start.
So Mr. Chima is claiming there's a discrepancy between what, what is being reported to us and what has been received. I'm just trying to understand what the difference.
Which aspect?
I, I think of the.
The percentage, you don't put in those 244 people. They signed by each individual people, by them, tick mark them. They came in each envelope, separate envelope, it's not came in one envelope.
No.
Yeah.
I want the council to know that, too.
Yeah, yeah.
You did say that earlier.
I, I would, I want to support that, yes, you were correct there. What he is saying is, is true that there was a number, like hundreds of people that did complete that, did sign that survey and provide it to the district. And we did struggle with how we should present that information. It wasn't an intention to suppress or hide the information. We just felt that it was a unique piece of information that came from, from a group. And we tried to find a way to handle it appropriately so that the staff and community was aware of the differences between how that came in and, and how the other information came in.
On what effect, you just not came from group, that's what signed by individual people. Now you said a group again.
You know, I think when, when council gets feedback from the community, we'll get a petition, we'll get form letters, we'll get a checklist that's been checked off and if you agree with it, sign the bottom. We get all, we get individual letters, we get phone calls, we get all sorts of. So I, I think this was a bit of a new one because it wasn't a form letter and it wasn't a petition. It was a.
It's a part of the survey, this written document.
It's a survey written by one person, signed by many people. So they're agreeing to what has been written there. And I think all, all that staff is doing is that this was another form of communication from the public in a distinct form. That's what I read when I read the report.
So where would you really, why don't you read the whole thing? You only read this portion, you missed this concept.
If I made any mistakes in how I represented it, I apologize. I certainly have tried my best to represent what I felt was the message coming from that group of community.
Yeah.
It's, we're probably pointing out also that we did discuss this at the community advisory committee and the advisory committee's recommendation was also to show it distinctly from the overall results. So it's not just staff.
And it's reflected in the overall numbers for a particular area. Okay, continue, Mr. Chima.
The result was shown on the screen. We want to be for the record, they are wrong on the draft. Today's, what we're showing, they're not correct numbers. We want to be just for record here, the mayor and council.
So I think what needs to happen is if you have evidence that we're missing a certain number, you need to provide that to staff because staff is saying we got 244 and you're saying there's 300, but they didn't come into council, they didn't come into this building. But they didn't come into council. They didn't come into this building. So I think you just have to figure out where the discrepancy is. We didn't receive them. Believe me, everything, Robin is our gatekeeper. Everything that comes in from a legislative point of view is filed, stamped with the date and given to the right people.
I'm going to give you for record, when we push for the letter from K from C, temple, then they found the letter. I'm just going to give you one example. There's many other example. I don't want to disclose to you. When we push for one thing, they found it anyway. There's many other things. We don't want to push it yet. When the right time will, we will push it.
Thank you, Mayor Richmond. I'm hearing from the proponent accusations that staff are withholding information. I believe this is something that we should talk about, not in the public. And if the proponent would like to give me specific facts, then I will investigate those.
Thank you.
No problem.
I have a hard time.
Yes, thank you.
We can, we can talk in the closing meeting when at the next time you want to be available.
You can just have a conversation with Linda.
Yep, no problem. And so if however, if they can't be right, why not they call it those two hundred and forty-four people on the survey percentage? If they can tell me to mayor, to staff.
Because it, I I I think we felt that it represented a specific interest that was relevant to a specific development possibility. And we wanted to highlight that. And then in a way that helped us make our recommendation that that your property had a specific significant value to the community. And let us partly, among other comments that were supportive of gain of the assets on your land, that led us to develop that option four. I think we we tried to take it in and look at it in the whole and let it inform our decision making. So I think it's appreciated that that information came in and we tried to incorporate it into what we were recommending.
You all want to correct through mayor to you. It's not only for five ten or five, not five oh nine. Also is including five thirteen. That's not on my, so this not, you cannot say special group. That's only three parcel will have the threshold. They will all including on those three parcels. So so just don't say specific my land.
They're very low, large parcels, but yes.
Yes, apologies.
And specifically saying on all the papers, there should be no threshold, any land, five oh nine, five thirteen or beyond. Not only in my land.
Yeah, thresholds are still an option for council to determine.
Yeah, you can choose, but I'm.
The discussion we're having.
Yeah, the way the Karen said, the public spoken, the mayor and council should know, public spoken, yes. They said thirty-eight percent people, they don't want any threshold, any land. If you talk about fourth option. Option one is ten percent, option two twenty-seven percent, and option three is twenty-five percent. If you talk about option four, thirty-eight percent people spoken on those letters through the survey. They don't want any threshold, any land. This clearly saying that. So if you talk about the percentage, what's the public want?
And as Counselor Chappelle articulated very well, it's a it's a small amount of the population. So it forms a part of our, part of the basis of what we're trying to value.
They make it look smaller if they count all those petition was given by three hundred, two hundred forty-four and hundred and ten people petitioned. They never included yet in there. It's what we got up to nine hundred people.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna give you five more minutes and then we have to move on to the next agenda. I suspect we're not going to get to the end of this discussion. So we'll push further growth management to discussion within the OCP to September. We're just, we've just run out of time.
Okay, I want to ask, when was this with hundred and ten people was petition was given to staff? Why not they part of the including the OCP draft?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, mayor is holding up the petitions that were dropped off.
Oh, the ones that we we got here?
Yeah, yeah. And so those, those were not included in the engagement summary. It's a sort of a separate petition. It doesn't refer to the, well, it's specific to five oh nine, five ten. And it's been forwarded for the OCP public hearing folder. Uh, but it wasn't part of the, it was outside of the survey, so we didn't highlight it.
But we did receive, council has received it.
It was received, I believe, at date stamp, June, mid-June. Which would be after, like, the day after the survey.
Yeah, it is a bit misleading because it's really talking about transportation issues and not specific to the OCP, but it's obviously related. We we have received it, Mr. Chairman.
Also, if I just might add, all of the correspondence and petitions and all of this are being saved within the public hearing folder. And so at the end of the day, when the OCP comes forward, all of, all of this submitted.
It has to be legislative.
Major, major package. So we are continuing. So to Mr. Chairman, if there are ones that you were noticing that are missing that were, that you do not see, please forward them to staff.
I think there's, there's two pieces. There's all the stuff that's going to inform the public hearing process, but there's stuff that's going to inform some of the decision making leading up to the final draft. So I mean, we do need to have certain information during certain decision making periods within the. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, and the plan was given by Sorka. I was not part of that plan, so I I never seen that plan before. So.
Yeah, he articulated that.
The way roughly is showing only development and one hundred and fifty acre, given two hundred and fifty acre open space or or trails. It doesn't.
This is just circus.
That's why we're very comfortable though. I never seen that plan. So. And I work with Sorka. I got no problem. They're pretty good people. And I don't believe you will ever issue working with them. And plus option four, then they recommended by after this, you know, we we handed everything. We disagree with putting any threshold. They agree to the people spoken on the open house and they believe in public open house. And the number of people spoken, that shouldn't be threshold, shouldn't be there. The percentage is very high of people spoken in that survey. There shouldn't be any threshold on our land. One way they say they read it, they spoken, that's why they bring in option four. But option four, people spoken, there shouldn't be any threshold on the on the land, period. And that should get developed right away.
And council will debate that.
So that's why we're very thankful that we disagree with option four right now and and the numbers. And, you know, we really against the tie. And there's three hundred people petitions. I'm gonna hand it to you.
And that's this one here?
This is not a hundred and ten, this is three hundred.
Okay.
And so I wish we have more time, but.
We we will make more time. It's it's such a big topic. So we'll have another meeting to continue the conversation.
So he's gonna read it over what was written on, on specifically on this letter. He's gonna read it. Then council can ask me the question.
So option three was checkmarked and then it was, we wrote Iceford option three subject to where it says, add additional comments. District lot five oh nine, five ten must be designated as residential neighborhood, not as future residential neighborhood. Point number two, there must be no population threshold cap first on district lot five oh nine, five ten. Point three, the twenty-two five hundred, twenty-two thousand five hundred population cap must be eliminated from the OCP policies and no new population threshold for district lot five oh nine, five ten in the new OCP. Point four, allow for the full development of district lot five oh nine, five ten now. There must be no phase development between now and twenty forty. Development must be allowed to occur quickly as possible. And at the bottom, it said, the four community amenities that he mentioned were Iceford development of district lot five oh nine, five ten because it will provide access to highway ninety-nine. It will have green space and integrated trail network for sports and recreational clubs. It will have a new school, increased supply of housing will make housing prices affordable, especially for single-family detached homes, townhouses and duplexes. Thus, development of district lot five oh nine, five ten will provide numerous community benefits and it is also not in a flood zone. And I also like to point out there were many other forms with district lot five oh nine, five ten and five thirteen submitted to the city.
So that's with the clear picture on those letter, we've assigned it and they submitted to the city. And they, they said it's not part of the five hundred people. They are, they are.
And if you voted for option four, it already says.
There was no option four.
Oh, sorry. If you voted for option three, it clearly mentions future residential neighborhoods. So encompasses all the properties that is in the OCP draft. And the comments, anyone's allowed to comment whatever they want. And that doesn't mean you're part of a certain group. You know, that's votes just so be counted for option three.
So go ahead, councilman, ask me some questions.
Actually, I'll go to Louise quickly. We're really out of time. So.
Thank you. I'll speak first. And I also thank you to staff for helping us with the member session. It was really insightful. Allowed us to understand the sentiment of our members. So thank you. And we have not submitted any official feedback on the OCP to date. And we are still in discussion, but I wanted to quickly come to the table and to let you know that we have passed a motion to send a letter regarding the growth management. And we're going to suggest an option four. An option four without a cap and not specific to any lots in order to alleviate pressure on the habitat and employment lands in the valley along with all the other amenities and others.
We'll look forward to that letter to the motion report. So really quickly, I've got Ted, I've got Karen, I've got Susan, I've got Jason.
Really quickly.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a whole other meeting on this. We'll allocate three hours to it so we can get through it.
Well, you know, I just, what I want to hear is everyone's going to work on this together. The trails are going to be great. Road connections are going to be great.
Hey, we are getting way ahead of ourselves. We're talking with group management, not a particularly relevant.
But this is a very key piece we talked about. This is the biggest.
That will be part of the policy. Absolutely. Karen, Susan, Jason.
I wanted to put the motion that we received, the base three engagement on the table and that we refer the conversation to the other community at the hole in September. And if someone seconded that, I will speak.
We look like I'm really accepting the council back and forth.
Go ahead.
So I really appreciate the conversation today. I think lots of council members said some important things and it's good food for that. And I don't want to rush this decision on the growth management policy just because it's our last one on the side. So some of the things that are on my mind in advance of September is that, one, I think our brand plays a really, really important role in how we decide on growth management. And it's not just about biking, but it's about climbing and hiking. The the whole value developers get from Squamish is the reason people that here. And so I think somehow our growth management policies need to be thinking about the brand that we've been building and the tourism Squamish and the building. In the same way that we are struggling downtown with building what we want built because we don't have the policy in place. I'm I'm not married to specific population thresholds before we open up some of these lands. But what I am committed to is having really good policy in place before. So that we're not trying to catch up with developers and say, oh, we want this, but we want this. And there's no policy in place to make it happen. We're just hoping for the best from developers. So what Counselor Chappelle was talking about, that trail network, we need it for more than just this piece of land. We need to understand the value of our hiking trails, our climbing access, our mountain biking trails before we open up these future residential neighborhoods. We need, we need a CAC policy that is not an interim policy anymore, but one that talks to infill development and also greenfield development. Because we've been struggling with that on the cheap diet and water funding. We have no inclusive housing policy yet. And I know that's coming, which is why we've hired Nicola. But I wouldn't want to see any doc talk in future neighborhood developments without an understanding what market rental we're going to get and below market rental and affordable inclusive housing for all spectrums. And finally, we don't have a missing middle housing policy yet. And we have no net gain trail policy yet. So maybe we don't open up these neighborhoods until we've got that policy in place. And if developers want to hire consultants to help us speed that along, hallelujah, it will save us all a bunch of money. And I'm happy for future councils to to have the discretion. And the last thing before I would contemplate the growth management decision on which option we choose is to have that criteria for massive community developments spelled out really clearly. Thank you.
So on the referral, and and let's focus in on information that we still want to make sure we have at the next meeting so we can continue the conversation. Anybody else want to speak to the referral? Yeah, go ahead, Jason and Doug.
Yeah, I've been holding my comments for a while. So I just wanted to make sure that before we break that I want to make it clear that, you know, I appreciate that staff has gone the lengths they have gone to to try and accommodate the applicant in this instance. I think it goes above and beyond what would normally be accorded to any applicant. I think it's unfortunate that we are going to consider weakening our growth management and our smart growth for because of one applicant. I have grave concerns about this type of development and I think it will open the door to many, many others. And I don't think like what's the point of having growth management if we're just going to open it up every time a developer comes up with a good idea. I'm really concerned about what the cost would be to services development. I'm really concerned about the fact that the affordability aspect we have to recognize and grapple with the fact that we are fully integrated into the Metro Vancouver housing market. It is people who are selling homes and reaping benefits in Metro Vancouver who are moving here and they have more money to spend. So that commands a higher price. So don't be mistaken. This developments like this is not going to be more affordable housing. There'll be more housing on the market for sure. But let's be realistic about affordability.
You're verging on the debate now, but.
Yeah, but, you know, everybody else had their safe. So I just, a couple of quick points.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Douglas.
Sorry, Douglas.
Yeah, thanks.
On the referral, so information you'd like to see for the next.
So for the next go around of this, I would like to see a policy that is applicable to all other properties, to all undeveloped properties. I'm concerned about picking on one property or specifying one property as an option. I would look for policy or suggestions around practically every undeveloped piece of property. Almost a regional growth strategy approach to it where they have draw a circle around the settlement area. And then you justify going outside the settlement area. It's almost like my understanding of the Wizard of Red Cap where replace the cap, froze it. And then if you want to get above the cap or if you want to open up something else, you have to justify it on some community benefit basis, which we can talk about in the debate. So that's the way I'm thinking. I'd be looking for for information or options around that to actually manage the whole of the growth and not just deal specifically with one property.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Race that this, that it has to be comprehensive and not specifically focused on any one property or development, that we're developing this policy for the community. I'm really wanting to see more economic development policy in there. And I agree with Karen that there's a lot of different strategies that are out there that we've started, but that haven't come back to us yet. I'm worried about climate adaptation. I am worried that we are focusing all our density and our growth in an area that has fifty-four climatic disasters waiting to happen. So we haven't actually included.
Forty-seven, was it?
Four, uh, thank you for that. Yes, four, excuse me, forty-seven. That's much less than fifty-four. But, you know, the cost to our community in looking at the expense of development in a floodable area and the amount of money and resources we have to put into developing and densifying into a low-lying area that's prone to flooding and fifty-four whatever number of climatic disasters, that has to be taken into account when we are actually looking at moving the community up. Seems like a really good idea and is in every single municipality's purvey right now is moving communities out of low-lying ocean sensitive areas. And yet we're looking at densifying in our low-lying ocean, you know, ocean sensitive areas where we're going to have sea level rise, rivers and flooding from glacier melting. So it seems like a really good idea to not have population caps because we're going to have to be adjusting things as these events come to fruition and looking at developing outside of climatic sensitive areas. So I think that's a big missing piece in our OCP right now. I recognize that density is a fantastic principle and ending growth development. But it it leaves out a huge capacity to understand how the climate is going to affect our region when we develop on an estuary. So economic lands should be in the estuary. Density for economic lands, I agree with, but not so much housing. And continuation of building housing in a low-lying area that's prone to flooding, that will be wiped out every hundred years. So, yeah, and our policy has not caught up. I've already spoken on that. So trail referral body, I'd like to see more information on that and make sure that that's implemented into our budget.
Lots of feedback.
Just sort that out while we can discover.
Yeah, and and I know there's a lot of policies that council officials talking about are in in it. And I think we need to understand how they start to inform, when we start to see the need to grow into to green, green space. And so I think that context piece has to be part of the growth management conversation. And Jason talked about infrastructure and finance and that's a big part of it too. So lots to think about there. Appreciate everybody's comments. We're gonna maybe recess for a minute because I just want to talk. We're going to maybe recess for a minute, because I just want to talk...
Hold on, question?
Oh, yeah, great, sorry, call the question, all those in favor, opposed, standing, which we carries. We have one really big topic, and we have zero time left in our committee meeting, so we'll recess for a minute, let me talk with staff about what we can and can't do today, and what we may have to put off till next meeting, and, thanks, everybody.